Is the 7th of September. We hope you all had a great Labor Day weekend. We're glad to see so many people in the audience today. And as usual, we will start with a chaplain prayer and pledges. So if our wonderful police chaplain Ralph Dawkins will come forward, we'll start this meeting appropriately.
Thank you and good morning. Let us pray. Father, thank you for the opportunity to invoke prayer, your word into this gathering of city officials, leaders, and concerned citizens. Father, your word declares that we should acknowledge you in all of our ways, and you would direct our paths. And you said if we delight ourselves in you, that you would give us the desires of our hearts. So I pray for these city leaders, as you've given them the responsibility to watch and guide over our city that they serve. I ask that you would work mightily among them today. Come into this room and cause them to have a productive meeting. Lead each and every one of them so that they can make fruitful contributions to deal with every agenda item that is on the docket today. And enable them, oh Lord, to think and strategize in ways that will achieve great results. I pray that you would give them godly wisdom, direction, and instructions on how to lead, manage, and operate this city and its departments. Father, give these servant leaders knowledge, wisdom, and courage on how to best serve the community and the family and the facilities and the businesses by resolving all the problems and issues that are facing our city and its people. So I pray for the mayor, her staff and assistants, the city council members, the city manager, and every person and department that is instrumental in leading our city. I pray for the police chief and the entire police force, the sheriff's department, that they will continue to protect and serve the residents of our city. I pray for the fire chief and the fire department and all first responders who serve our city. Lastly, I pray that you would bless our city with economic prosperity. You draw in and attract to our city, industry, businesses, and corporations that will produce jobs and revenue and help us to grow and prosper. In Jesus' name, amen. Let's do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you.
We have two proclamations this morning, the first one being for the Downtown Lions Club. Do we have people in the audience today to receive this proclamation? Okay, we'll read it. The San Angelo Downtown Lions Club was organized on September 11th, 1923, with forty-two charter members. Those charter members and the many that have followed since share concern for their fellow man with the willingness to get involved and do something to help those less fortunate. The club has sponsored over thirty other clubs in this region of Texas and has grown to eight distinct Lions Clubs. Over the years, the club has focused on the missions of vision, hunger, environment, diabetes, and childhood cancer. The Lions have vision screenings, food drives, highway cleanups, diabetes awareness programs, and childhood cancer projects to address their missions. Civic and humanitarian needs continue to grow here at home and all over the world. The Lions Club has demonstrated its commitment to their motto of, quote, "We serve," by continuing to be involved in civic activities. This club has a proud past, and its members, both former and present, have left a legacy for future generations to follow. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim September the 11th, 2023, as the 100th anniversary of the San Angelo Downtown Lions Club. Our next proclamation is our National POW MIA Recognition Day, and I'm sure there's some individuals in the audience to receive this, so please come forward. Good morning, everyone. Welcome. I'm going to hand the proclamation to you. Come on, you can, some of you can come right over here. And then we'll go forward and actually have a picture in a minute. I see more people coming forward, maybe? Come on. Throughout American history, generations of patriots have fearlessly served in our military. They gave their lives to protect our country and preserve democracy around the world. Over the previous eighty-two years, one hundred and twenty-five thousand American men and women have been captured and held as prisoners of war by hostile powers. Their captors subjected them to harsh and inhumane treatment. Some died in captivity, some were rescued, and many returned home, but not all. They are among the eighty-three thousand Americans who have been declared missing because of military conflict across several eras. The people of San Angelo shall never forget our fellow citizens that were held captive by the enemy, including Chief Warrant Officer Howard Drake and Sergeant Stratton Beasley, both prisoners of war during World War II, and those who were or remain missing in action such as Petty Officer Milton Brown, World War II, Master Sergeant Johnny Johnson, Korean War, Colonel Louis Jones, the Vietnam War, and Major Troy Gilbert, Operation Enduring Freedom in Iraq. The third Friday of September is dedicated to honoring those who remain missing and those who suffered starvation, isolation, fear, and uncertainty during their captivity. Now, therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, do hereby proclaim Friday, September the 15th, 2023, as National POW POW MIA Recognition Day in San Angelo, Texas, and are proud to join the state of Texas and the entire nation and pay tribute to these valiant American veterans. It is because of these people commitment that our country and others around the globe can experience freedom. Would someone like to speak?
All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the privilege of addressing this esteemed council and the community today. It is with deep honor and gratitude that we witnessed this proclamation designating a day of remembrance for our prisoners of war and those missing in action. In the Air Force and the military as a whole, we hold the values of duty, honor, and commitment close to our hearts. Today, we are reminded that those values extend far beyond the boundaries of military service. They resonate deeply within our local community, where we unite to remember and honor those who have sacrificed for our nation. The day you have designated as a remembrance for POWs and MIA's is a powerful testament to the unwavering support of our community. It reflects your commitment to ensuring that no one is forgotten, that the sacrifices of those who have endured the hardships of captivity or remain missing in action are acknowledged and cherished. We are immensely grateful for your support, which provides comfort and solace to the families of those still waiting for answers and to our brave warriors who have returned home. Today's proclamation stands as a symbol of our collective commitment to never cease searching, never cease remembering, and never cease honoring those who have given so much for our freedom. Thank you once again for this proclamation and for unwavering support for standing with us and honoring the memory of the POWs and MIA's.
Well, I should say, does anybody else want to speak?
I will tell you, as a dependent of a veteran in several wars of Korea and Vietnam War, as a veteran myself and as a father of veterans who have also been in the war, but have witnessed what goes on with the repatriation of our soldiers, sailors, airmen, and Marines who have been missing in action and returned to the families, I also recognize those families who have lost loved ones at one time or another and appreciate what it is that we do today to recognize the POWs and MIA's.
Good morning. I just wanted to tell the City of San Angelo, City Council, Mayor Gunter, representing the veterans in the American Legion, how much this proclamation means to us. It means we're remembering the hardships that all those POWs went through in order to get home. It's remembering that all those service members that are still missing from all the conflicts are not forgotten, remembering that they are all heroes.
Anyone else like to speak today? Next item on our agenda is public comment. Do we have individuals in the audience who would like to come forward and offer any public comment?
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. I'm Charlotte Anderson, Executive Director of Keep San Angelo Beautiful. And this morning, we wanted to share with you a publication that we submitted to Texas Town and City. We're real proud of our story in here regarding our gift that we received from Ms. Fluids' third-grade class. The story's on page forty-eight, and it goes to page fifty-two, and it discusses our meeting with Cash Coy, who was the student who initiated our great visits to their classroom, work on their triage research projects. We're really proud to highlight him and the classroom and then our beautiful book that we received. And just for an update on our book, I think we showed that at one of the other council meetings. It has been disassembled, and we're working with KLS T to have it reproduced into a book form, and we will print twelve thousand copies so that all of our elementary students in the City of San Angelo will receive a copy of ABC, Twenty-Six Ways to Keep San Angelo Beautiful. And secondly, we have an invitation for you. We have recently committed or finished two murals that are part of the Ten Murals Project. We were happy to partner with Art in Uncommon Places. And our two murals are on Irving Street and then right around the corner on Avenue A at the intersection of Hill. So we will have a ribbon cutting on Thursday, the 21st, and we hope that you can join us for that. On the back of that page is our Fall Sweep. It will be October the 14th, and we're real excited this year. We're hoping to double our numbers. And again, just a great opportunity for us to meet relevant community needs, create relationships through intentional acts of service, and engage in purposeful teamwork. And I can tell you, our business are wrapping their hearts around the environment, and they are showing up. So we're registering teams left and right. And lastly, I would like to show you one of our new toys that we got from our conference. Okay, so this is a new ergonomically correct way to collect trash.
Cool.
You don't have to touch the trash bag. If the wind's blowing, you don't have to grab your bag. The bag slips right into the plastic cover, and it just makes it really easy to grab and go. So your pickup is a lot quicker and a lot easier. All of our teams on the Fall Sweep will get at least one of these, and we'll test them out and see how we do. But we think it's going to be a really fun addition to scouting out and looking for the most interesting item.
Thank you very much, Charlotte.
Thank you.
Further public comment? I'm going to ask Chief Brody, oh, go ahead, come on, ma'am.
My name is Susan Perry, and I live at 266 Buffalo Lane. My comments are primarily centered around the city's animal shelter and the lack of enforcement of the spay-neuter microchip ordinances. They were put in place eight years ago. At that time, the vast majority of the animals entering the animal shelter have not been spayed or neutered, and even more have not been microchipped, making it impossible to track the owners of these animals. There have been over two hundred and fifty puppies enter the animal shelter so far this year. So there's a lot of people not getting the message. Part of San Angelo's long-term vision and strategic goals for neighborhoods includes neighborhood safety based on code enforcement. The purpose of local ordinances is to protect the health and safety of citizens of San Angelo and to preserve our quality of life. We want to foster pride in the community, but it says a lot about the quality of life when you are afraid to walk your own dog in your own neighborhood or in city parks because of the dogs running at large. This is not a problem in just one or two neighborhoods. It has become a problem in every neighborhood, and it is the responsibility of Animal Control and Animal Services Director to enforce the ordinances regarding people's pets. Giving an irresponsible pet owner a citation for noncompliance of spay-neuter microchip ordinances as well as not keeping their dogs contained is necessary, but it also needs to be followed up. Right now, there doesn't seem to be a whole lot of follow-up, if there is, in fact, some kind of a citation issued. Communities are judged by the way they treat their animals, and San Angelo is not doing a very good job right now. We need some public service announcements. We need some education of schoolchildren about the reasons for spay-neuter microchip. Last week, one of the council members commented on the need for renovations at the animal shelter and the funding of those renovations. It has been recognized for years that something needs to be done, but just because there has been money allocated for renovations, it doesn't mean that the problem is actually anything is getting done. I would like to know what kind of timeframe the city is looking at to start or complete the needed renovations and what plan there is to continue intake of animals and where the existing populations of dogs will be housed during the time renovations would take, perhaps four to six months. That is something that somebody really needs to think about. I don't believe that that is being done.
If you could wrap up your comments, please.
Okay, I would encourage each of you to watch the video recording of the last two Animal Services Committee meetings for April and August. There were public comments at both of those meetings, but a committee such as that cannot be very effective if the public cannot ask questions, and it is extremely difficult to get anything on the agenda for that committee by their bylaws. They are supposed to go to the animal shelter one day a month, and that is not happening. Or if it is, they are not reporting back to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Further public comment?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Jay Howard. I'm with Texas Disposal Systems at 720 North Buchanan Street, here this morning to talk to you briefly about the city's current solid waste and recycling services contract. As you all are aware, the current contractor has been here in the city for decades. The current ten-year contract, I believe, is up about this time next year. At that time, my understanding is that the city is going to have the opportunity to either renew that contract for an additional seven years or to consider a competitive bidding process. So our company, Texas Disposal Systems, is in the business. So clearly, I'm here this afternoon, or this morning, rather, to ask that you consider that in the coming months. We'd love to throw our hat in the ring. You know, our company's not one of the, you know, national, you know, brands with thousands of cities that we service around the country, but we are a private, family-owned business started by Bobby and Jimmy Gregory, who were born and raised here in San Angelo, multi-generational business owners here. And over the last forty-five years, they've built a company that is one of the largest, most successful privately-owned companies in our industry. We partner with dozens of municipalities around the state of Texas and are very proud of those partnerships and the tailored approach we take to each city that we do partner with rather than coming to them with a cookie-cutter approach. So I had an opportunity a few weeks back to meet with Mr. Kelton and his team that manage this contract, and what I got from them is that things are going pretty smoothly with the current situation, and there's no real need from the staff's perspective to look elsewhere. But as a council, if you do decide to take that approach, you know, from my perspective, I do believe that we have got a lot of value that we could offer and that it's worth your time and consideration. You know, in a competitive process, you know, since it's been as long as it has been, you know, you might get through a process like that and find that what you're doing now is exactly what you need to keep doing moving forward, but you'll know for sure. But you might, in fact, find that there's some value that the residents and businesses don't have access to at this point. There's opportunities to grow what you're offering, the businesses and residents here. But a competitive process, in the absence of a competitive process, you just don't know what you don't know. So I hope in the coming months, when this becomes a topic of conversation, that you'll consider it. And if you do, we're very much looking forward to participating. So thank you very much for all your time.
Thank you. Further public comment? Fire Chief Brody, would you just please come forward and talk about Monday's event? We're about to come up to the September 11th anniversary of, and you're hosting the event and putting it together, and I just want you to have an opportunity to tell the public what's going to happen on Monday, 9/11.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. On Monday, September the 11th, at 9:00 a.m. at the Memorial Bridge, we will be doing the 9/11 memorial where we dedicate and we remember of the events that took place on September 11, 2001.
And the reason we want to make sure we make this public announcement is that over the years, fewer and fewer people have attended this event. And what we want to say is those people who lost their lives, who signed up for service following 9/11, they need to be remembered. We cannot, just because time has gone by, forget what happened on 9/11. It is our opportunity to honor all of those who served, continue to serve, and represent America at its best. Thank you. Further public comment? Now's your time. Seeing nor hearing anyone wanting to come forward, we will end the public comment section of the agenda, and we will move on to the consent agenda. Larry, do you have an item you'd like to pull on the consent agenda?
E and J.
E and J. Karen?
No, ma'am.
Lucy?
No, ma'am.
Harry?
No, ma'am.
Tom?
Nothing to pull.
Tommy?
No, ma'am.
Okay. With that, may I ask for a motion to approve all of the items on the consent agenda except for item E and item J?
So move.
So move by?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. It is open for public comment. With no public comment offered, let's take a vote on the consent agenda with the exception of item E and item J. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. We will now move into item E, which is consider authorizing the city manager to reject the bid received for AP-01-23 for runway 9-27 conversion and south taxi lane construction. Jeremy, thanks for being here this morning. Larry, do you have questions?
Yes, ma'am. I had a conversation with Jeremy yesterday, and there's some interesting information he may want to share concerning where the contract is and what is happening now.
Okay, sure. Jeremy Valgartsen, the San Angelo Airport Director, glad to be with you today. Just to give you an update, we did, well, we're requesting to pull the bid just because of the dollar amount. The grant amount that I was able to secure is only fifteen million, which was still higher than our engineer's estimate for the project, which did also account for inflation. We got one bid for concrete. We received no bidders for asphalt. We put it back out for bid for concrete. We got one bid that was 100% higher than our engineer's estimate. So we just didn't have the funds, and it's not responsible to spend that much money on the project. We think we can keep runway 927 at least operational for another year. So we're working with the FAA, we're working with some of the local contractors to try and get the schedule a little more favorable for some bids. So hopefully, we'll see the south taxi lane project, we're going to separate the south taxi lane and the runway 927 project. In the initial bid, they were put together to try and get economies of scale. Some of the local contractors are saying it would be better to separate just to help with their workload. So we're going to separate the projects. The south taxi lane project will hopefully go out for bid before the end of the year with a bid opening and projected construction start date in February of next year. And then the 927 project is really contingent on FAA grant funding availability, but it'll probably be late in 2024 when we receive those funds.
Just a question. So in the meeting to discuss this issue, there was an October date that was open instead of moving it to February. Why have we gone from October opportunity to February?
Just talking with the contractors, we won't be able to get, we certainly won't be able to get the bid. We have to bid it back out. We have to do at least another six-week bid to get it done. And since we're pulling it from the 927 and we're separating it, there's some more engineering design that's involved, some more construction management. So it just, we're not, we're not able to attain. The October was the bid date that we were shooting for, and we're still trying to get that at least out by October 1st of November. But then with the bid hold, we're looking at a construction about February timeframe.
Just want to emphasize, you need to make those dates happen. There's not an option here. Got to happen. Because we already are going to miss the October date, which was maybe optimistic, but it would have been a timeframe that was more positive. And so I want to make sure we're moving all the buttons. We have to move to meet this February time. I prefer the October timeframe.
Yeah, Mayor, and we did, we met with, actually, yesterday, we met with some of the contractors, and the concern with October is construction would start in October, so we would have an open pit, and you just can't lay asphalt in November, December. The winter months, it's a little difficult to lay.
Well, if it is in November, December, let me tell you about February. Because our worst storms generally happen in February, not November and December. In fact, we're known to have some eighty-degree days in February, I mean, in November and December. So in February, not such a good month. So I caution that approach. I caution moving it to February, when it's usually our worst weather month of the year.
Yeah, and again, we'll get a bid out as soon as we can. It's really contentious upon whoever receives the bid on when they want to start construction, but we'll be ready as soon as we put the bid out.
Make it my priority here. I was looking for October.
We do want a good product because we are anticipating some large aircraft on that taxi lane, so it does need to meet all the FAA spec with the P-209 and all the technical specifications that we tried to, we tried to get a variance for, but the FAA just won't budge on the variance.
Mayor?
Yes, Tommy.
Question. Jeremy, help me out. I am not a flying person in terms of...
Some would question that comment, but go ahead.
I don't, the nomenclature that you use, 92s, I was under the impression, I thought we were closing 927. Is that inaccurate? I thought we were going to totally, we were going to decommission that and close it. Why are we looking at concrete and asphalt to, I'm confused with this.
Yeah, good question. So that's what this project will do. It'll essentially close runway 927 and convert it to a taxiway hotel. If we close runway 927 now because of its condition, there will be no way for the air carriers to taxi out to runway 21 without back taxiing, and the air carriers are not allowed to back taxi. So if we keep it as a runway, we would have to cover that cost if we convert, because the FAA no longer supports that crosswind runway. If we convert it to a taxiway, then it'll be eligible for federal funding.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, Tom?
So it's a fifteen-million-dollar taxiway?
Between the two projects, it's an estimate, yeah. It's a ten-million-dollar taxiway.
Further questions?
Thanks, Jeremy. Thanks, Jeremy.
No, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. So then, thank you, Jeremy. Looking for October there. Just want to repeat that. February concerns me. With that, may I have a motion for approval? Karen, second. Tommy, public comment? No public comment. Let's take a vote. All those in favor of approving item E, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Motion passes seven zero. We will move on to item J, I believe, and item J is consider approving the removal and replacement of trees located at the City Hall Annex. Patrick, you're on.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. What this item is, just a real quick background. During the Yurie storm, as all around town, the City Hall Annex also was hit by some detriment to the trees around that facility there. It, to the effect that the trees are no longer living and or viable, to the tune of about fourteen trees around that complex. So we've had some pretty substantial limbs that have actually broken, fallen down onto the sidewalks and into the roadways. So it's very important that we get those trees removed, get that safety hazard out. Also, it doesn't look aesthetically pleasing to our visitors that are coming through town and traveling by that annex. And we will be replacing those trees with comparable trees that will keep the, you know, keep the aesthetic value of our downtown city nice and visually pleasing. Comes to council for approval because it is in that designated district that requires y'all's approval to remove any trees within that downtown district. So that's why we're seeking your approval today to remove those fourteen trees that have died and passed their life.
You say comparable. So comparable would mean some huge, big trees being planted. So when you say comparable, describe what comparable means to you.
We're not planting twigs. We're going to plant trees that are substantial in size, up to three to six inches. We're going to try to push that six inch mark. Get trees as large as our budget can reasonably stand. We'll be weighing, bidding those out, weighing those different diameters as they come up and what we can stand. We want trees that aren't going to look out of place necessarily, but that we can, we can say is a good use of our money as we come in. So we're not planting little bitty twigs and hoping they grow up in fifty years. We're going to get some more substantial trees so that we can, we can vary that canopy as it grows through the years.
Larry, do you have further questions?
My problem isn't the trees. The trees are dead. My question is, why does this have to come to city council? I've spoken to a few people, and I believe this decision could be made at a lower level. I don't mind that the city council is here to perhaps listen to an appeal on it, but it makes little sense to me that we have to be here for fourteen trees that are dead.
I understand. So our ordinance reads, speaks to trees in two different, two different places. One, trees within the right of way are under the jurisdiction of city council within the city limits. Specifically, in our case, there is a designated downtown district that is defined, basically goes along the river at Randolph Street and kind of encompasses that area. That city council has jurisdiction of all the trees within that particular boundary. It's, I'm assuming, back in the day, whenever that was passed by council, it was to create or to maintain and ensure that that particular area kept its value, which is, you know, trees have large value, especially when they're mature trees, and ensuring the longevity of that particular district. So that's my assumption of when that was passed, but I know that that is in ordinance, and that's why we're here today to ask you for that removal.
The city attorney want to say something about this?
Yes, we can delegate that authority to perhaps the planning department, since it is within their rules, to make that initial determination and then have an appeal, as you said, if the party does not like the determination that was made. So if John, for instance, would deny the request to remove trees, they could still appeal it to council. It would require an ordinance change. I know, we've talked about that in the past, maybe bringing that to you guys. There has been in the past a list of acceptable trees. I don't think we can locate it right now, but we can certainly recreate such a list to make sure that there maintains that level of uniformity in the kinds of trees that are planted, if that's what you'd like to direct us to do.
I think it has to come to council for lots of reasons, and one being because generally speaking, it's more than just a tree removal. It's sidewalk issues, it's other issues, and too many people very often want to simply remove a tree without dealing with the larger, bigger picture. And trees add value. They're an important part of West Texas. Many people travel to our city and comment on the amount of trees we have, how green our city looks. It adds value to who we are, what we look like. I want to make sure we enforce that ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for approval? I move to approve. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tommy. Any public comment? With none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Motion passes seven zero. That completes our agenda for our consent agenda. So we will move into our regular agenda. We will start with items A and B. And just to be clear what we're doing here, I'm going to read A and B together, but they will have to be voted on separately. But there's one presentation that will be inclusive of items A and B, so we don't have to hear the same presentation twice. But we will have to vote twice on this A and B item, okay? So first, comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appallants are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. Item A is first reading and public hearing of an ordinance amending Appendix A, Article A eight point zero zero zero, subsection A eight point zero zero two, monthly water and water reclamation rates. Item B is the first reading and public hearing of an ordinance amending Appendix A, Article A eight point zero zero zero, subsection A eight point zero two one, municipal drainage utility system fees. And Shane, you are on.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. If y'all remember back in July, when we were at the budget workshop back then, when we're talking about the enterprise funds, we were discussing the, our, how much inflation has affected our O and M budgets. And so y'all directed us to look at that inflationary rate and to bring back, bring back in this meeting, some recommendations to see what we can do to help offset those increases. So that's what we're here to do today. And if y'all are agreeable to this, and y'all want to move forward with this, we would propose that these rate increases would go into effect on ten one, and that we would also look at the, continue to look at our capital needs moving forward into next year with a rate study, whether that's in-house, or we look for outside help to work through that process. Looking at a little bit of history here, as we go back to our rates and what we've done in the past, water and sewer, we have, we have had some rate increases since 2015. And, excuse me, I've got some drainage.
Got a little allergy thing going on?
It is. I don't know. I've been draining all morning here. So, but with that, we have had since 2015, rate increases since 2015. In 2020, those rate increases have stopped, and we've been at a flat rate ever since. And then on the stormwater rates, you can see there that we have been flat, actually, it goes back further than that, back to 2010, when the rate was introduced. It's been flat ever since. We have not had a single rate increase since, actually, 2010. Some of the things that we were really looking at that have caused, excuse me, have really caused some of...
Need some water, because I have a bottle.
Do you have a bottle?
Yeah.
We brought that bottle specially for you, Shane.
[inaudible]
It's good water. I won't say it tastes like our water, from our faucet, but it's good.
Lemon lime water, okay.
Yeah. I pretend it's healthy.
Very good. Some of the things driving up those costs, operational costs, have been, of course, the personnel of the council, really being aggressive and trying to help bring our salaries up to a, up to a competitive wage. And so that's caused some pressure on our operational costs. Of course, equipment. We have seen equipment prices in the last three to five years double in a lot of cases, whether that be pickup trucks, backhoes, street sweepers, all those type things. We have, we have really seen a huge increase in the last three to five years in our equipment costs. Of course, these three funds do replace their own equipment as well. Utilities, this last year, we have seen a really large increase in our utilities, especially electricity, when we look at the water plants and the water treatment, or the wastewater treatment plant. Those are really large electrical users, and so we saw significant increases in our utilities. Did see some increases in our gas costs as well, natural gas costs as well. And of course, chemicals. Chemicals is what has really been what has caused us the most pain the last, the last three to five years, especially chlorine and chloramine, our two, our two main things that we use to make our water, drinking water safe. And so those, those have really skyrocketed, tripled and quadrupled in price in the last three to five years. So we've, we've really, really seen a lot of issues there as well, too. So these are kind of the driving factors behind those operational, excuse me, cost increases. So when we, when we looked at that, we looked at what we were doing. We'll take, start with the water fund. With the water fund, we saw an operational increase of one point four two million in the water fund. Of course, that was prior to councils, the last council meeting, when y'all authorized another increase for staff in the pay. So, but when we looked at this and we went back, a four percent increase across, across the water rates, across all rates, across the, in our ordinance, across all rates, would generate one point five million to help offset those costs. And so that's very close to basically offsetting the operational increases that we've seen. And so we tried to, as we went across this, we tried to make sure that we, we tried to just cover costs and not, not do anything excessive. So in our water reclamation fund, we saw a two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar increase in our operational costs there. In the water reclamation side, we are proposing a one point five percent increase. A one point five percent increase in the water reclamation fund would generate two hundred and sixty-nine thousand additional revenue. And then when we start talking about stormwater, we go back to, go back to our stormwater, we get into, let me step back. When we, when we first initiated the stormwater program and we set the fees up and we set up the budget, we had originally set up to have between eight and nine hundred thousand dollars worth of capital monies to use in that fund when we set that fund up. A portion of that was to be set back for capital equipment replacement every year, and so, so we could do our own equipment replacement and not have to rely on the general fund to help us out. So that was part of it. And then also, the remainder of those capital funds was to be used for smaller projects and/or to let the fund balance grow so we could maybe do a more intermediate-sized project as we go along.
Well, don't you use those stormwater. Boy, that microphone came on. Can you hear me now? So on the stormwater, we also, when we are working on major projects such as College Hills, where we're redoing utilities,
Yes, ma'am.
we tap into the stormwater fund to help pay for reconstruction on major projects like that.
Yes, ma'am. Those projects as well. We have, we, a lot of the street projects, if we do have some drainage issues, drainage improvements that we can make, we use these, those capital funds as well to, to help offset those construction costs in those projects. And like, and also, one of the projects that we've been really trying to work on the past few years has been the dredging of Sunset Lake and also Parkview Lakes as well. So we've been trying to work on those, and again, trying to build this fund over time. But since we have not seen a rate increase since its inception in 2010, we've had to use those capital funds to offset our O and M costs. And so this year was the first year that we budgeted actually zero dollars in our capital line, just because we finally, finally got to the point that we're just, our O and M costs have, just eat up our ability to have any capital funds left and remaining. So what, what we're proposing here in stormwater is a four percent increase on the stormwater, existing stormwater rates that would generate a hundred and, basically, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of revenue that we could start budgeting back into our capital line item, so that we would have some capital funds to continue to work with and also to help replace equipment as we move further on down, down the road. And as we kind of, you know, just to kind of look at this and kind of see what this, these rates would do to a typical bill, residential customer, four thousand gallons per month on a five eighths meter, the water bill, you would see an increase of a dollar ninety-seven per month. The sewer side, the water reclamation side, you would see a forty-five cent increase. And for this, this is, we used a two thousand and one to three thousand square foot impervious surface area, residential area, and that would increase it by sixteen cents per month. So a total increase on a residence of this, of this size and kind using this many gallons of water, we see a two dollar and fifty-eight cent per month increase on their bill.
So is four thousand gallons the average water usage per household?
Yes, that is, that is our average water consumption for a non-resident, or for a residential meter.
Any questions for Shane on this slide?
Yes, please.
Okay, Tommy?
Shane, if, and I know you're not saying, I know, I think you're not doing it here. Don't we have greater needs than what you've even talked about here on our water reclamation side in terms of capital expenditures that need to be made at the plant?
We do, and also the water side as well, too. And that's when, when, at the first, and of course, I was stumbling through, trying to, trying to be able to live. But when I referenced that, we'll look at, we want to look at those in 2024, next year, as we work through the next budget cycle. That was a lot bigger, that's a whole lot bigger discussion than we could get put together in two weeks. And so that's why we want to step back in 2024, before we come to you in next budget season, and, and work through those numbers and bring back a true rate plan, rate study, that will address those larger capital needs that we have coming up.
It will have longevity attached to it, where this is just a one-year cover, the large expense increase, so it's good.
I learned that in conversation with Shane, but I thought we needed to draw it out for the benefit of the public, yeah. So we're going to have another conversation.
We will have another conversation as we move into budget season in next year, and strategic planning, and as we go into budget season next year, we'll be bringing that information to you then.
Thanks.
All right. And then, just to kind of, so you can kind of see what, what it would be. Now, this, the, these increases include all services over here, water, sewer, and, and stormwater. As we look at the different usages amounts, you've got a four thousand gallon, which is our typical. If you want to see what somebody at eight thousand or somebody at forty-one thousand with a sprinkler meter, what that would do to them, you can kind of see per month, like I said, our typical residential customer would see a two dollar and fifty-eight cent. If that customer uses eight thousand gallons per month for whatever reason, you would see it go up three dollars and seventy-six per month. Or if you have someone that's really using a lot of water, forty-one thousand gallons, which is a lot of water, and we do have, we do have some residential customers that do use that much, you would see a fifteen dollar and twenty-one cent per month increase on their bill. But again, that's a very large water user.
With, we've spoke about this during budget session as well, but with us being in a significant drought, and certainly the rain this week was nice, but certainly doesn't solve the deficit we have in terms of need for rain. How are the water sales up or down? I know they were pretty consistent with last year, the last time we looked at that, last month. So has that changed?
It, it has not changed. We are still, we are still running that twenty-one, twenty to twenty-two million gallons per day is normally what we're averaging right now. We have, we've been averaging that through since June. So we did come in earlier in the year with some lower numbers than, than normal, but we have, since we've got into June, July, August, and even going into September now, we're seeing those, those water sales numbers stay, stay fairly high.
I think today, the forecast is a hundred and five degrees, so continues to be a little bit warm.
It'll continue, we're going to continue to see those, those, until we, until we see some rain, we're going to see those twenty to twenty-two million gallon per day numbers for the city, so.
What's our loss due to evaporation?
At the lakes, or?
Yeah, just our surface supplies.
It's, it's been staggering this year. We, we've... It's, it's been staggering this year. We, we've, we've seen more evaporation than normal. We, we've seen twin buttes has dropped two and a half feet, so just in surface elevation. So we're, it's just over the summer. So we, we've seen, seen quite a bit of evaporation this year.
Sorry to interrupt your presentation. Continue.
No problem. And then as we go on to the non-residential, with a 5/8 meter or even, it could be a 1-inch meter or even larger at this point, when you start talking about non-residential. But we just pulled, pulled one customer, this happens to be a, a medium-sized restaurant, used 67,000 gallons of water per month. So at that rate, their water, water would increase, their water bill would increase by $20 per month, and their sewer rate would increase by $4.23 per month for an increase of 2422 per month for water and sewer. Stormwater is a little different on non-residential, because the, the meter, in residential situation, the meter is almost 100% in the person's name that is living in the house and using that. Not necessarily so for non-residential. A lot of properties are owned by a different party, a third party, and they're just rented. And so the actual owner of the property for an, for an commercial property, non-residential property, the bill actually goes to the owner of the property, not to the person who's meter, that has the meter in their name. So that's why you don't see the stormwater on the, on this, on the non-residential side.
But if you're running a business, ultimately, that expense to the landowner is going to come and hit the person who leases it, so.
It will. And I will, and I will go over those increases, which are minimal, you know, but I will go over those here in just a second to kind of give you all an idea what those increases would be, unless y'all want to hear them now. So.
Go ahead.
And then again, just to kind of look at the different, we just, we randomly pulled three non-residential customers from kind of three different ranges in there, just to kind of show you what it'd do. If, if a, a non-residential customer is using 6,000, it'd increase their monthly bill by $3.81. 12,000, $6.86 per month is what you would see there. And then, of course, again, the 67,000 gallon user that we discussed in the previous slide at 24. And I think unfortunately, that was the end of that one. So let me go over.
Let just, are there any questions for Shane at this point? Any further questions? All right, continue.
Okay. Just so we can go over the increases for, and I'll, and I'm going to go ahead and go over residential and non-residential on the stormwater, just so by tier, so everybody knows what, what that increase is per tier. On a residential, tier one is less than 1,000 square feet of impervious surface. That is going to increase by 8 cents per month. Tier two is 1,001 to 2,000 square feet of impervious surface. That's going to increase 12 cents per month. Tier three is a 2,001 to 3,000 square feet. That is going to increase 16 cents per month. And then tier four is greater than 3,000, and that will increase to 20, increase by 20 cents per month. On our non-residential, on tier one is, is a business or a commercial property, non-residential property, less than 5,000 square feet, they're going to see an increase of 30 cents per month. Tier two is 5,001 to 15,000 square feet. They're going to increase by 60 cents per month. Tier three is 15,001 to 50,000 square feet. They will see an increase of $1.20 per month. 50,001 to 150,000 square feet, we'll see a $4 increase per month. The tier five, which is 150,001 square feet to 500,000 square feet, we'll see a $12 increase per month. And a tier six, which is greater than 500,000 square feet, will see a $20 increase per month.
Questions for Shane? Continue.
And with that, if y'all have any more questions, if y'all want to know kind of anything, the, and then I don't know tiers, if y'all have, if you want to know businesses or something that kind of fall in that, just so you know, or if y'all are good, then that concludes my presentation and
Okay.
I'm here for any questions.
So seeing none, we'll go ahead and I'll read item A again. First reading in public hearing of an ordinance amending appendix A, article A8.000, subsection A8.002, monthly water and water reclamation rates. May I have a motion for approval of item A?
Move.
So move by Harry.
Second.
A second by Tom. Public comment? No public comment. We'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved, seven to zero. Item B is the first reading in public hearing of an ordinance amending appendix A, article A8.000, subsection A8.021, municipal drainage utility system fees. May I have a motion for approval?
So move.
Tag it.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Harry. Public comment on these items? With none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item B is passed, seven to zero. Thank you, Shane. Item C is discussion and consideration of matters related to the fiscal year. And I'm going to stop here. I think there's people, wait a minute, Tina, I think there's people in the audience that we might ask to come forward so they don't have to hang any longer. So I'm trying to go through here and look at some of those items. I see Howard College folks in the audience. So I'm going to ask that we move item A as one item, and that is consideration of a request by Howard College for a waiver of development-related fees related to the construction of a new electrical and plumbing trades building. John, you're on. Counsel, look at the other items and see if there's something else we ought to do earlier, if you would, please.
Thank you. John James, Director of Planning and Development Services. We don't have any presentation for this. It's in your packet. Basically, they are requesting a waiver of fees for that particular project.
Describe the project and then ask, and then tell, because this is a publicly recorded meeting, what that dollar waiver would represent.
I'll have to get to that information on the dollar amount, but this is basically, they recently, a few years ago, built a trades building. And this is a second planned building that's just next to that. And so I believe, you probably have that in front of you, I believe is about $2,900 was our estimate of the total of fees. That's for multiple different things, building permits and various other related fees to that. And this does require your approval to, to waive those fees.
We met yesterday with the Texas Workforce Commission, and one of the big issues that I, that we asked them about, and one of the biggest issues I hear from people in San Angelo is the lack of construction trades people. So we know that we need to continue to support and create trades schools to support the construction industry in this city. There are many people retiring. A lot of people aren't moving into these industries. And yet, if we don't have a labor force up and coming, trained to, for the construction business, we're going to have a difficult time continuing to grow as a city. So this school is hugely important to the city of San Angelo and workforce development. So I support this item and believe it's a, a correct use of support and funds to make sure this happens. Questions from counsel? Yes, Tommy?
I, I do have some questions, Mayor. John, do we have a policy for fee waivers if something like this comes to you that, that you can look to for guidance?
We do not currently. It's, it's really a discretionary decision by you all, under what circumstances you would feel comfortable waiving fees like this.
And how is this different than others to which you might say no to such a request?
I guess I would turn that around to you all, since, I mean, it's really your discretion to, to decide that. That would be my only caution, is that requests like this, you want to think long and hard about, because we wouldn't want to start waiving fees left and right for, for just anyone who comes forward. This is a little unique, because it is the college. It's for a particular needed item. It's related to a project that, you know, it's really not a private project. It's grant funded. And so it's a limited budget to make this project move forward.
We have waived for them in the past?
The previous trades facility?
This is the second of two buildings, and I think the first building you waived the fees for as well.
The only thought that occurs to me, I, I know we, we talked about this during budget as well, general fund supports the fact that we, our fees are not covering the costs that we charge now, that we need to at least have that in our mind as we make the decision that, you know, we do, the general fund does have to support the, the fact that we don't have the, the fee structure where it needs to be. So, Mayor, I do, I do, I do agree with your comment. We, we, we need the school. It gives, it gives me some cause for pause to, to, to be waiving fees.
I don't think we should be in the business of waiving fees overall, generally speaking. So it's not about suggesting that we should be doing this on a regular basis. But we do know the construction business right now is suffering greatly from workforce development. And we are in severe need of people in the trades, construction trades. It's a big-ish ask for a lot of people. And we need to, I, I believe, support workforce development in this area. It's really important to the future of construction, because if we don't have that labor force, it gets much more expensive to do business and do development.
Mayor, this is really a positive economic impact, really, when you start looking at it. So waiving these fees and what comes out of it, really, the end game is that positive economic, economic impact. We definitely will receive that and we'll see that in the future.
Further questions, comments from anyone on counsel? One more thing, Tommy?
Just commenting. Thank you for saying that, you know, we're not going to be ongoing waiving fees. And with, with that, I, I do agree with you too, Daniel. It does have a definite positive economic impact on, on the community. I, I would move approval of the fee waiver for $2,900.
Thank you, Tommy. The second by Lucy. Public comment on this item? If you want to speak, please come forward. Introduce yourself. Tell us who you are, where you live.
I'm Judy Wood. I'm new to San Angelo. I've been here a few months.
Do you kind of pull that microphone down and speak into it?
Yes, I normally don't need help. I'm such, my mouth is usually pretty loud. But anyway, moved here from Midland. There is an organization that's similar. I, I worked as a volunteer for a nonprofit organization for some time. There's a similar organization that included daycare with education, several things together like that. It's very successful in Odessa. And I just wanted to put in a plug that the whole package together is a very good package, because it helps single parents who desperately need to be able to make a living, to be able to get some kind of an education, to learn how to work. A lot of people don't even have any work history, but yet they have children. And so the way this package is put together, I have seen this work. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you for offering that.
Yes.
And I'm glad you brought up the childcare issue, because that also was one of the conversations that was talked about yesterday in the Texas Workforce Commission meeting. So we know that this piece is just one piece of things that we need to do to support the community, ensure that we have a future workforce trained and ready to go to work. So with that, any further public comment? All right. So with that, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven, zero. So thank you for being here today, Howard College. Let's see, is there another item that we need to move forward on that people are in the audience waiting for? Let's do item J, which is first reading in public hearing on an ordinance amending PD 07-03 at 2909 South A and M to allow for a school, daycare, job training, and bakery cafe, including appeal of a denial of the bakery cafe. John, you're on.
Don't know if my slides are on this one, or if they need to switch it. Last item, so it might take a second. We're getting close. Okay. As you mentioned, this is a, an amendment to an existing planned development from 2007. It was originally a school on that site. When the school closed, it was sold. And as you may recall, a number of folks have come forward over the years looking at possible uses for that. The current planned development, or the original planned development from 2007, kept it as RS1, which is single-family residential, but added assisted group living. So at the time, there was a plan for a possible group home assisted living of some sort. That did not end up moving forward, but that was the, the planned development at the time. In 2013, the gymnastics facility was added as a use. And so there was a gymnastics gym at that location for a number of years. You may recall that they moved recently out of that facility. And so currently, that entire facility is vacant, as I understand it. And so this is an amendment to that planned development that would allow a group home, an associated school and daycare, as well as a bakery and a cafe on the property. Now, I'll mention this again in a minute, but this change is only for the center portion. And so it's something like that. You'll see a map of it in a minute. So this doesn't change and allow these uses throughout the entire site, but only the core where the existing school buildings are. This is designated neighborhood on the future land use plan. And as you can see, it is adjacent mostly to neighborhood here, although it's adjacent here to that open space, the Arroyo on, on the backside. So this would, because of the existing school use, or the pre-existing school use, these are often tricky. Churches and schools are allowed generally in neighborhoods, but when they close, it's difficult, because you can't just put a single-family home in. And so we often get folks looking to do something non-residential in them. But that often creates a conflict with the adjacent residences, because again, churches and schools are allowed in locations where typically you, you wouldn't want to see more intensive commercial-type uses. We did send out our notifications. We did not receive any in support. We did receive three, I'm sorry, this is just within the 200-feet notification area. We received three in opposition. We did also receive a number of comments from outside the area, at least outside the 200 feet. And we received seven in support and 24 in opposition. That does count some of the folks who spoke at the planning commission. The applicant, I believe, has talked to many of the neighbors. But again, that's opposition we received. Some of those may no longer be opposed, but those are the ones we had received throughout the process.
Would you talk about the reasons for the opposition?
Yeah, it's largely what you would expect. It's, it's right adjacent to the neighborhood. They're particularly concerned about any sort of retail use, commercial-type use. You may recall, not too long ago, water bottling facility was proposed for this site, and there was neighborhood opposition to that. That ended up getting denied. I'll mention this in a second again, but the planning commission did recommend approval of the group home, the daycare, the school uses. And so that, and I think from the input that we received, the neighbors didn't have as much concern with those uses. It really was the commercial use, in this case, the bakery and cafe. Concerns about noise, traffic was a large concern, those kinds of concerns with this being right.
So when you talk about the bakery and the cafe, is this a training, to culinary training to work in the bakery? Is this a restaurant that would be open to the neighborhood? Talk about those issues, or those two things, bakery and cafe, where there's opposition.
Yeah, I can talk a little bit about it. The applicant, I believe, could probably shed more. The applicant, I believe, could probably shed more light on that. My understanding is that this would be a facility for young, most, young single mothers to provide them a place to stay, a place to, to go to school, and as well as daycare for the children, while they would learn a skill in the bakery. But it would also be a retail bakery and cafe that, you know, anybody could come to, the public could come and, and purchase, you know, coffee shop, bakery items, those kinds of things. So it's, it's sort of both. So it, it would have the impacts of any similar cafe, coffee shop, bakery, in that it would bring in people from the public, at least that's their intent. But again, when the applicant speaks, they could probably provide a little more detail about their, their plans. As I mentioned earlier, this would be an amendment just to that core of the property. This northern piece is, is owned by the Catholic Church and school across the street. It's currently vacant, and then this perhaps has some future plans for different uses, but is not part of this particular request. So this, this is the original site plan for when it was proposed for an assisted living facility. Again, that's never gone forward, but it is technically still an approved use on the property. This is the applicant's proposed concept plan. It's, it's hard to read, so we kind of identified each of the different uses, but it would include a residential living component, as well as the daycare and school, and then finally on the corner there would be the bakery. Just a few pictures. I'll go through these pretty quickly, but you, just to, if there are questions, and just to see what the, the site looks like currently, and this one on the left is looking back at the neighborhood, and then this is down the street to that church property. Just a couple more pictures of the building. Staff is supportive of the group home, school, and daycare uses as proposed, and as you'll see, as was the Planning Commission. We do have, share some of the concerns with the commercial use within the neighborhood. It's, it's not uncommon, particularly historically, to have small corner stores, you know, coffee shop, bakery, in or adjacent to a neighborhood, so that's not necessarily something that would be completely, we would be completely opposed to, but there are some concerns of, of where that sits in the neighborhood. And again, we think that that could be acceptable if there were adequate limitations that would address hours of operation, traffic generation, those sorts of things.
What kind of difference in traffic would there be, conceptually, from when it was a school versus a bakery cafe? Because with a school, you're, you would have had, historically, lots of people coming and going, buses, et cetera. So the question mark is, what's the difference?
That's a good question. That did come up and was discussed at the Planning Commission. I think the difference is, with a school, you have a whole lot of activity in a very short period of time, mainly kid drop-off and pickup times, whereas something like a retail use would be more, it would be less, but more consistent throughout the day. And so I think that was the concern raised by the neighbors, although they would probably say they weren't real thrilled about the, the peak times with the school use, but I think that was, that was kind of where the Planning Commission fell, was that, yes, in some ways, you could think of this as less intensive than the school use, but it would be longer throughout the day.
May I comment on your question?
I attended this elementary school, and I am so old that I can attest to the fact that the traffic patterns would be very different today than they would have been when I attended that school. There were lots of kids that walked to school, rode their bicycles to school, and not so many people that were driving their children to school. Yes, there may have been buses. I don't really have any recollection of that. So it was not in any way similar to the cultural patterns that we see today, and I'd just like to offer that for consideration.
So you're basically saying that the traffic would be more intense than it would have been as a school?
Yes, I think so. Yes. And I think as well, that having a, a school across the street creates, while in the positive, creates a natural client for that bakery, it also creates safety concerns, because they would cross the street to access the bakery, children crossing the street to access the bakery. So just another thing to think about. It wouldn't just be car traffic close to a corner, per the design offered, which is not perhaps the greatest location for a commercial use if it's approved, but also the management of that pedestrian traffic would become a big concern for me.
Lucy, you had a?
I just had a question, John. How long has that school been vacant?
That's a good question. I do not know the answer. Maybe someone else here knows, but I don't know when it closed.
I think that'll come up in some public comment.
Just real quickly, the, these are the conditions that were recommended by staff, as well as the Planning Commission, and I won't go through all of them, but mainly some procedural kinds of things that would have to happen. Part of that includes some design review to help ensure that how they design it would address any concern, well, address to the extent possible concerns about traffic and layout, driveways, that kind of thing, as well as some aesthetic improvements as well. And as I mentioned, the Planning Commission did consider this at their June meeting. They did approve it with a five-o vote, but without the cafe and bakery, and so that was actually denied as part of the motion. So if you choose to approve as approved by the Planning Commission, it would simply require a simple majority vote. If however you, you would like to approve with the cafe bakery use, that would trigger a supermajority vote by the council to approve completely as requested by the applicant.
Would you go back to the map? And maybe those pictures, but, okay, so looking at the map, and probably this isn't the right map, but locate the bakery cafe relative to the street and relative to the circular driveway, relative to parking, et cetera, because this is not easy to see and understand in terms of what this says, and I can't see anywhere where I would understand where parking would be, where the traffic flow would be. This just does not give the information, I think, relative to the questions that one might have in terms of what impact it could have. So Tommy, you had a question?
To, to your question, Mayor, I spent a, a little while out there yesterday afternoon. That, based on this rendering here, that bakery, cafe, coffee shop would, would be right on the corner of A&amp;M and Oxford. That was one of my first questions, as I just sat there and looked, was parking and access, because they are really shallow, what I would call shallow, pull-through lanes right now, that don't really have parking per se. So that was going to be a question of mine. Where would any parking take place, John? I noticed it looked like maybe a staff faculty parking lot back down Oxford, but...
Yeah, so here's that bakery building. It's a little hard to see, but there's a small parking lot right here, a little bit larger parking lot here, and then this whole row of parking, and then finally some in the rear. Presumably, this, this parking up in the, you know, this area would be largely the retail parking. They would have to meet our parking standards in the zoning ordinance, and so if this was approved, through that review process, site plan review, they would have to ensure that they do meet the parking standards that we have for a retail use.
And what would that parking standard be?
You know, off the top of my head, I don't, it's, it's one parking space per every, I think, 300 square feet of, of retail space, but it's something like that. If they were to have a drive-thru, which I don't know that they've proposed, the applicant could address that, there are also some standards for that, a number of queuing spaces, for example, to help ensure that, you know, a line of cars doesn't back up into the street, and those sorts of things.
So if one was to, those parking lots are on what street?
So here is, there is Oxford coming through this way, and then A&amp;M comes through this way.
So the, the primary traffic would be at the corner of Oxford and A&amp;M, moving towards Ox, all Oxford, not A&amp;M, because of the nature of where the parking is. So the impact is going to be on Oxford, not so much on A&amp;M. If you look at this diagram, I'm not saying this was going to happen, but this diagram would reflect that the traffic would be on Oxford, not A&amp;M, because of parking.
Yeah, as it's laid out here, the parking, they would enter the parking off of Oxford. I, I wouldn't necessarily say that means that traffic wouldn't be coming to the site, not from A&amp;M, but yeah.
They could come from A&amp;M and turn on Oxford.
Right, right. And I would suspect that would be a fair amount of the traffic to the site would be on A&amp;M, turning onto Oxford.
Further questions? Karen, do you have further questions or comments? So what, I'm trying to just think through what other question to ask about the bakery, cafe, coffee. It would seem to be, at some level, a bonus to a community, a neighborhood, offering somebody a place together for coffee and bakery items. So I would think from a business perspective, it would add some quality of life to a neighborhood, someplace they could walk and go eat and enjoy coffee or dessert. That would be the positive. The negative would be, in fact, additional traffic if it's successful. But if it's successful, it means that the neighborhood wanted it. And if someone's willing to take that risk would be the other issue. Is someone willing to spend the money to create this bakery, cafe, coffee house, which is not inexpensive, would be an expensive investment? Is there enough business to justify the expense? And if there is enough business, it would say the neighborhood wanted the business. And we can't answer those questions today, because, in fact, we don't know.
I think the neighbors most closely to this would probably disagree with that a little bit, in, in that they would, they would have the impacts, and it might be people coming from elsewhere, driving into the, the coffee shop. So even if it is successful, doesn't necessarily mean the immediate neighbors would
Be happy.
Would call it a success.
Yep. Other questions or comments? So let me ask this. We can do a couple of things. One, we can pass, vote and pass or deny all of this except for the bakery, cafe, coffee shop. We could ask that you bring back with a lot more detail and information on the bakery, cafe, coffee shop for further discussion, but not denying that opportunity. Or we can approve all of the items and then deny the bakery, cafe, coffee. So depending on who makes the motion, yes, Larry?
I was wondering if the petitioner is here.
Well, we're going to open up for some public comment, okay? But I'm just reviewing what the options are out there. So it's not, it doesn't have to be black and white. It could be, yeah, we support approving all except the bakery, cafe, coffee, and denying that. We could make a motion to approve all but the bakery, cafe, and ask that that be brought back at a further time, when we better understand what kind of parking would be required and how that parking would impact, or traffic would impact the neighborhood. And then we could vote up or down that at a later date, and that's another option. Or we can, the third option is, I think, as we said, as it's presented.
And I'll just remind you, as a plan development, you have the ability, unlike regular zoning, you have the ability to place conditions. So i-if, for example, you might be comfortable with the bakery, cafe, but, for example, would not feel comfortable with the drive-thru, you could make that a condition, that it not have a drive-thru, or if there are other, other similar conditions that might help alleviate some of the concerns, you can place additional conditions on the approval if you do that.
Would you go back and review the conditions that the Planning Commission put on this project?
Yeah, and largely theirs are not about those kinds of things, like limitations, but requiring a subdivision plot. They, they split the property without going through the legally required process, so they would have to remedy that. They, any development would have to be consistent with that site plan we were just, or concept plan we were just looking at. Any major revisions to that would have to come back to the Planning Commission. Site plan must be approved. That's already required, but this is largely to remind the applicant. An urban design review must be approved. That looks at things like parking and landscaping and aesthetics of the buildings, and then a certificate of occupancy must be approved prior to any opening of any business or residential use.
Was there presented, I didn't see it, a site plan in terms of how it would look? Because what we do know is the following, and that's an important part of whether we choose to or not do, is understanding what it's going to look like. Because what we do know is an empty facility like this school, for decades, is not a, a positive for a neighborhood. It's deterioration. It continues to get worse by year. There's no requirement to make it look any better than it is, and so it doesn't enhance a neighborhood. It's not making the neighborhood look good. A vacant, large-scale, square-footage facility like this vacant is not positive. Making it look a whole lot better by some of these things that were approved is a positive. I want to know what this bakery, cafe would look like as a commercial business, and whether it would look to enhance or deteriorate. I mean, or is it just going to be empty and ugly with parking? I mean, we don't know. And I think we needed some sort of a, a visual, a site plan that says, this is what it's going to look like. This is how it's going to enhance a neighborhood, or is it just all going to be a negative and take away from a neighborhood?
And that's something that typically is not, that information's usually not available for when you all are looking at it. That's done later in the development process.
It's an important part.
But that's not to say, we have had plan developments where all of that was reviewed prior to the approval, and so that is definitely something you could ask the applicant to see renderings of the buildings, what the landscaping's going to look like, what they propose for parking. That's something you could do. I, I guess I would just caution you to, to, to maybe first talk through the decision of whether this is something you would want to allow anyway, because we don't want to make an applicant jump through a lot, a lot of hoops if,
Correct.
if you're not comfortable with that use anyway.
Those are just options, and it's not a cut, I don't think, a black-and-white scenario, and we've obviously got to take a vote on it today. So we, we, we can do a couple of things. We can have a motion made and then open up for public comment, or if council believes that hearing public comment would be more, more important before we have a motion, we can do that as well. So what would council like to do?
I'd like to hear comments before we make a motion.
Okay, so...
I mean, there's so many variables in here.
I know.
It's just like what you say, it's, there's a lot of things that could go and happen here. We need to, I would love to hear some input if y'all don't want to.
Okay, let's do that. Let's open it up for public comment. Those who would like to offer public comment, please come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Mike Wise. I'm the chancellor for the Catholic Diocese of San Angelo, and I, I'm a little confused by all this because...
Join the group here. Yeah.
Well, the Catholic Diocese has been negotiating with the owner of that property for the last six weeks to take over the ownership of that property, which would make all of this a moot point. We, uh, we have the, the school, of course, is next door, and the church, and we've, we've looked at this property now for a few years, and I know that to put a project together like they are proposing here is going to take an easy couple million dollars. From what I've been able to find, they, you know, I don't know that if they have the wherewithal to be able to do that, but we've also had a, a, an estimate done on asbestos abatement. There's a lot of asbestos in those old buildings that is deteriorating, and it's open to the air. Before you could ever do anything with any of that, you're going to have to spend upwards of maybe a quarter million dollars to abate that building from asbestos, before you decide to remodel or demolish it or anything like that. And, but, but I was a little surprised about this because... And, but, but I was a little surprised about this because six, seven weeks ago, the owner of the property approached us telling us that he was willing to donate the property to us. So we've just been kind of working, trying to work that out with him. Plus, if the school takes over this property, whatever we decide to do there down the road, you know, five, 10 years from now, is not going to appreciably affect the traffic pattern. Because there's already a school there. And I don't think you would see the school enrollment jump that much to really affect the traffic. We would just, you know, have some different facilities there. But, so I was a little surprised when I saw this on the agenda today. It would seem to me that the property owner would have said something to, I believe it's Mr. Philip Wright that had originally brought all this forward, that we were negotiating to take that property off his hands. So I just kind of wanted to, if nothing else, it seems to me like this whole thing ought to just be tabled for a little bit till we kind of finish pursuing our negotiations with the property owner.
Well, I think it's very difficult to take a vote on something where we don't even have transfer of property at this point in time. So I don't even know what we're approving, because we're approving something that might not, for a person who owns it today, who intends to donate it to somebody else for development, if that person who owns it currently is not the one who's going to be spending the money to develop it.
And if we do take this over, it would not require any sort of change, zoning change or anything.
So, Tommy?
Couple of thoughts, Mayor. Mr. Wise is right. Just looking at that property there, it's going to take a lot of money to get that property in a usable condition. I don't care what anybody's going to do there. It's going to take a lot of money. The asbestos is another issue. I wondered about that, sitting out there looking at those buildings. I agree with what Mr. Wise said. I think we need to ask the two parties to work through their negotiation and deliberation process. And then if, if it doesn't fall to the diocese to have that property, then this can come back to us and we can make a decision on it at that point in time. You know, if in fact the diocese is able to acquire that property, then that changes the whole dynamic again. So it seems to me approving something today is the cart before the horse, but.
I agree.
Maybe I'm confused about this.
No, I think it is. And I, because if the person who owns it isn't going to be the person who develops it, and if you, as the Catholic diocese, understand the cost in dollars, you're going to have to come up with sources of money in order to do this. And then the question mark is, do you do a piece at a time, a part of a time? What's the timeline on all the aspects of it? I agree, I just, and maybe the reason it came forward is that people, or the owner of the property wants to take care of this negotiation for changing the zoning on it to relieve the Catholic Church of having to deal with it. But it's pretty hard for the Catholic Church to deal with it if they don't know, I mean, I just, the cart before the horse, a horse before the cart. I think voting on it right now with the future proposed owner of the property and what they might want to do with it, you don't own it yet, so I don't know how we're.
Well, what we would do is, the first thing I would do is put up a good-sized security fence around it, simply because of the asbestos that's there. And then the next step would be to do an abatement of the asbestos. And.
Right, but you don't own it right now.
No. And then the third step would be to demolish the buildings. And then, once that's done, the land could sit there for a few years till we decide, you know, what to do with it.
But again, if there's a potential question mark about maybe demolishing it, what are we approving today for development if it could be a potential teardown? I don't get it.
Ma'am?
Yes, Larry?
I'd recommend we table this. We are in total confusion over this, and further dialogue, I don't think, is going to help today. We need to have an accurate picture of what is happening out there. We do not have that now.
Most agree. Tom?
Well, yeah, but, and we haven't heard everybody speak, but I think there's a part, before somebody goes and attempts to develop the property, they need to know if it's zoned and everything's parked right before you invest your money in it. Because the guy that had the water company, he was ready to go and had all of, I don't know what we ended up costing him, but we changed that one right in the middle of the ballgame. I don't have a, you know, a dog in the fight here, but I just, I think everybody's right here. We need everybody to line it out, be clear on what it is, what it can be, and what it allowed to be, and then move forward with it. I think y'all's suggesting.
And with the timeframe, because what we could be voting on, it could be 10 years down the road. It doesn't mean it's going to happen in one year or two years. And, I mean, I think there's a lot of questions to be.
Make sure Karen has the right vehicle to go up and see this versus when you used to go.
Because it's going to be a lot of conversations.
Before our conversation, our public conversation concludes today, I'd like to pose a couple of questions publicly. Of course, I'd like to know if the applicant is here. And further to that, I would be curious to know whether there is an existing contract, a signed contract between the applicant and Jack Gabriel already in place. So I think those are important to the overall conversation as well.
I think it was indicated that they're in negotiations. I don't think there's a signed contract.
Well, no, we're negotiating, but I don't know if the applicant has a contract or not.
Right, so the diocese is the third, is the third person.
Because it had been my understanding, when all this started a year or two ago, that he was going to donate that to them. But then he approached us six, seven, eight weeks ago, saying that he wanted to donate it to us. So we started negotiating on how to do it and what would be best for him. But we haven't reached the point of a contract yet.
Okay, so we're asking if the owner of the property is here today, and if so, would like to come forward and have a conversation with us, I think? Is that right? Is that what we're asking, council?
Yes.
Okay. John?
Yeah, before he comes, I just wanted to make one comment. We do have, and we always have, either the applicant's permission to move a case like this forward. So we do have an affidavit from the current owner to allow this applicant to move forward with this request. So I just wanted to make it clear that it's, there is some confusion over these other negotiations with the church and all of that. But we do have a legitimate application with the authorization from the current owner of the property.
Not a sale or donation officially, but there's an affidavit that says we are going to do that. Is that correct?
There's an affidavit from the current property owner for this particular application to move forward. So that owner, the owner today, has authorized this zoning application to move forward.
Okay. We're going to open up for further public comment, so please come forward.
Hello, I'm Philip Wright, and I'm the applicant.
Hey, good, welcome.
And I did not have a clue about Catholic Church in the last six weeks. And so I sent the owner a text and asked him, what on earth? And what he replied? He said, I said, Mike Wise is here saying you've offered the Catholic Church the property. He says, possibly. I'd rather sell it to someone else.
And he'd rather sell it to somebody else? Is that what you just said?
That's, that was his response to me. What I had offered him a year ago was I had, from Mom's inheritance, I had that available in cash that I could offer for this. And then he could donate the balance for the facility. And my stipulation on it, because I knew he'd had it for so long, is a city approval, because there's no way I wanted to obtain this property with a possibility of denial and then have it sitting on my hands forever. And so bottom line was just trying to be practical there, that's why no sale happened, because that was my stipulation, that I was not about to move forward unless we had approval.
Clears up a lot of mud. Yes. Thank you.
As far as the girls' home, concept on the business was three portions, business, residence, school. Business is to make the money, to keep the facility operating. And secondly, provide a location where the girls can learn some actual work skills. And so that's the concept of having those there. Daycare and the bakery made sense, that location, because there's already a setup for a commercial kitchen at the former cafeteria. Commercial kitchen would operate for both the daycare and the school, which still allowed the cafeteria space for an additional usage. And so hence, the idea of just having a morning cafe made sense. And then anybody dropping off their kids at the daycare could just swing over, grab a bakery item and a coffee and head on to work. And so that's basic concept there. School, girls, keep their babies with them. In all the years I've been researching, I've only found one school that does that. And the bottom line is simple. They have to learn how to do something while they're taking care of their kids. And so that's the reason that concept is there with the school. And that area would be open to the public. And in the design with that drop-off on A and M, that would coincide with the school building, so any of the public that wanted to use just the school portion would be able to do so. And then the residence was placed in the very back of the facility, so farthest away from any of the traffic, and that'll be for those girls that have no social support. And so if you had somebody that actually just literally needed a place to go, that would be, would be available for them.
You know, my first, I will say that I think that your concept and your process of thinking about what is needed in our city today, from residential living, training, daycare, skills, is really well thought out. And I commend you for looking at this and saying, I see these things in our society that need to be addressed, and here's my game plan for trying to do that. So I think, I pat you on the back for your creative thinking and understanding what's going on in our society. Being business persons, which a lot of people sitting here are, my greatest concern is, number one, there's a lot of overhead here, a lot of expense, and it would look like to me for the first few years, for sure, that there'd be a lot of red ink. And so the question mark is, of course, conceptually, this looks wonderful. I like it. But I'm not sure, and of course, this is cart before the horse, horse before the cart, how this statistically works out to make it a viable concept, black ink or neutral ink at the end of the day. And I don't know if that means asking and receiving grants from federal, state, whatever, to make this thing happen. I don't know, but the concept is good. It's well thought out. I still understand the impact on a neighborhood, so I'm not denying that. But I truly believe your concept of what you're trying to create here is, addresses a lot of issues in our city. But statistically, and again, it's not part of the planning approving of, but end of the day, someone's got to come up with the money to not only do it, build it, create it, but then pay for the overhead. So who's going to do that? And you might not have the answers, I mean, but it's got to be part of it. I mean, it's not.
I agree with you, Mayor. The bottom line is, it's take a lot of upfront money. First of all, you can't put people in buildings that's got asbestos in it, you're going to have to abate that. And whatever that cost is, it's significant. I've been involved in a couple of projects in this community, and I will tell you, it's a lot of money. Other item is, is even if we decide to allow this whole thing, including the bakery, I can't see the concept of the bakery paying for the rest of the facilities in there. I don't care how successful it is. I just do not see that being the moneymaker to allow the rest of the operation to be successful. So I agree with the mayor. It's a great concept. I'm just not sure I can see that bakery is the sole source of income.
And perhaps there's been conversations with charities or the Catholic Church or whatever to support it fiscally so that it can be successful. And of course, until it's approved, no one knows. But the concept is fantastic. I question the viability statistically, black and red ink, red ink, no ink. And I don't think the Bakery Cafe can make enough money to pay for the overhead. Perhaps it can pay for electricity bill, but that's, that would be my concern. Yes?
Question for John. Where's John? If we delayed this, in my opinion, what needs to happen is, Mr. Wright, Mr. Wise, and Mr. Gabriel all need to get in a room and sit down and work this out. They need to come up with the plan of what's going to happen. That's my opinion. Then the question for you, John, is, at what point would it be triggered if it had to go back through our process to get this on the agenda again? What length of time is there within which they wouldn't have to go back to the Planning Commission, they wouldn't have to pay the fees, et cetera, et cetera, that they've already done?
That's really up to you. You could, you could table it. We don't like to see you table things indefinitely, because then they're hanging out there.
Definitely.
And so we like to give a timeframe on it, you know. Ideally, you would pick a date in the future. That saves us some hassle on processing kinds of things, but that's not a big deal. But I think you could direct us to bring it back.
And let's ask the applicants and all the three parties that you just talked about, if we ask that this be tabled until the second meeting of October or the first meeting in November, if that would be an appropriate timeframe to work through this? And if that works, and if they need another week, then they can let you all know. But let's plan on tabling it to either the second meeting in October or the first meeting in November, and come back and better understand all of the pieces and the impact, and who's going to own what, who's going to do what? That's just my recommendation. And I would need a council motion and a second to make that happen.
Make the motion.
Larry's made the motion, and Harry's going to second it.
That's right.
I'll just note that for our purposes, if you don't pick a specific date, then, I mean, we can bring it back on one of those dates. It will require new notifications and other things procedurally, so, and that's fine, again. But if you say this date or this date, it's as if you're not picking a date.
Okay, six weeks is the, a six-week window would be the second meeting in October, right? I'm kind of calculating in my head.
That's the 17th.
The eight weeks would be the first week in November. I'm assuming everyone would like to move on one way or the other, so let's make it the second meeting in October as the date. And if you'll add that to your motion, Larry?
Make a motion that you come back on the, what was that date again, ma'am?
Second meeting in October.
Second meeting in October.
Whatever that date is.
Yes, ma'am.
And that is, Harry has seconded that. We are going to open it up for further public comment at this point in time, and then we'll take a vote. Okay? Please come forward.
I'm back.
Good.
Flo Loica, live on 2790 Harvard and the 5th District of Karen. A lot went on in the planning meeting that wasn't brought up here. Mr. Wright said he could not afford to abate all of the asbestos at one time. He said he would do one building, then he would get the bakery going, and then he would do another building for the daycare. do another building for the daycare. Well, who wants their child in daycare with asbestos removal? He needs the money to abate it all at one time. Not only is that his problem, but yet it's a concern to the neighborhood. My husband is a lung transplant recipient. We live right across the street. I don't want him to die. And the pictures did not show what things look like now. There is asbestos out underneath the eaves. We've talked to the City of San Angelo, and, oh, the, the building has been vacant for 15 years. Jack Gabriel has done nothing until we just have thrown a fit, and he's replaced a couple of windows. Well, now they're all boarded up. It looks like we live in the slums. And I want something done. I applaud what Mr. Wright's trying to do. I just don't believe he has the money to do it. There's a coffee shop one block away, the bearded something.
Bearded, but, but.
Yeah, you know, and he's having trouble right now making it.
Because of the college shares.
Construction. So I would just, I've got pictures, I would, oh, and before they can start any construction, they have to have all of that asbestos abated. If they go in there and start constructions, it's $10,000 a day fine. I think the other thing is, I think that if Mr. Wright gets the approval for the coffee shop, if it goes under in a year, Mr. Gabriel's sitting pretty good, because it's owned commercial now. He wouldn't have to come before y'all and get that reassigned. Well, he wanted to do that water plant. He wouldn't have to come forward, because it's already his own commercial. And there is one building on that property that the gymnastics was. Well, it is being occupied. It's the volleyball. And my husband talked to the guy that was renting it. Jim's getting $4,000 a month for that, that one place. Yet he can't repair any of the windows at Travis. You know, I, I just really, if, if you would like to see some pictures my husband took yesterday, it, it, it looks like we live in the slums.
This reason I, I say.
And I would like, I would like the place condemned. That is what my final goal is. After 15 years of fighting Jim, I would like for it to be condemned. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment?
My name's Ken Reese. I'm a retired dentist in San Angelo. And I was on the Board of Christians in Action back in the early years. When I joined the, the board, we met at what was Mary Carter's piano shop next door to what is now Food King. Through the years, they moved from building to building, to building to building. And quite frankly, when we, the idea came up of, of purchasing a new building, I tended to be against it. My thought was, if we purchase a new building, then that's less money that we're going to be able to give to the people in San Angelo that, that need that assistance. I would, I would dissent, but the overwhelming feeling of the board was to go ahead and purchase the building. And they'd write for, they'd get grants. The plan would be to pay it out in, in a number of years. And typically, what would happen is the property was paid off within three years because of the grants. And they meant that they had that success after success after success, until they went out to what was the Safeway out on, on the Bryant, yeah, Bryant, not Bryant, the Blue. I, I wasn't on the board at that time. But the thing that I see is, in this particular process, my understanding, and I'm not a government official, but my understanding is, what you're doing is considering whether this is something that could possibly go forward and give permission for it to possibly go forward. Philip hasn't pursued the filling, the, for the funding, because he hadn't got permission to do it yet. But if you just give him the permission, and if it works out, then it's going to be fulfilled. If it doesn't happen, all you've done is given it permission for somebody else to do something with it. It's just a matter of doing, giving permission to do it. And that, that's what I see is the, is the purpose of the vote. What happens after you give him permission is up to higher power.
Thank you for your comments. Further public comment?
So I'd put a little follow-up on the asbestos. I do have a view on the asbestos. I've had it looked at, and I have prices to do the entire project and/or each building. And as far as asbestos in the air, you're required to hire a second unaffiliated company to do air quality the entire time the process is happening. And so having asbestos free in the air is not an issue because of the way the operation is done. As far as funding, once it is designed, actually, the cafe is not the main funding. It'd actually be the daycare would be the main funding for the operation of the facility. There was one more item to address. Sorry, I went blank.
Well, asbestos was one of the big issues.
Yes.
Timing on which facilities would happen first, because no one wants to have a daycare where their children are exposed to asbestos if the entire facility has not been abated. So how does one, would one be prepared to have the entire facility abated before anything happened?
There's something besides the abatement that has to happen. The asbestos is in the overhangs and the flooring, and that's all. The rest of the building, you know, they're fine.
So if you don't move, if you don't disrupt the flooring but cover it with carpet, for example, then it doesn't require abating?
Correct. You still have to do the monitoring, you know, every year.
The overhangs would be required to be abated, and those are all outside.
Yes. And so removing those boards would then necessitate having to recover them, and they already need new roofs, three out of the four. And so I, you know, am aware of all that, so therefore, the asbestos and a roof would have to be done at the same time, or one immediately after the other, just for the structure there. And so it would make sense to, since it's such a big task, to approach it at a single item, and also understanding that the process of the abatement is contained, so there is not an issue with air quality during such a procedure.
Thank you very much. Further public comment? All right, so the motion on the floor is to postpone making any decision or not to vote today, but to be prepared to put it on the agenda for the second week in October for further discussion and clarification for all parties, including all of us. So with that, let's take a vote. All those in favor of postponing it to the second week and, the second meeting in October, please say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed to that motion? Seeing none, it passes seven to zero to postpone making any decision until October. With that, we're going to have a break.
Let me make one, one comment for the good.
Because I've got to leave in the next hour.
Okay.
One, one comment. I am hopeful that we have a, a clear path and direction of ownership of the property. Who's going to be in control? What's going to happen with, with the current owner? If he's going to donate it to the diocese, if he's going to sell it? And it's not contingent on what we do, but they get those issues worked out before it comes back to us.
Okay, so before we leave on that break, Larry has to leave for a meeting he's committed to. The question mark is, are we, can we vote on item D before we do? So let's do this, as much as I want to break right now, I know Harry's got to go. Let's bring forward item D, Tina, and let's make that.
C and D.
C and D. So let's bring that forward and vote on that, so Harry can do what he needs to do, and then we'll take a break, okay? Is everybody good? Okay.
Okay.
Tina?
Thank you. So we've already, of course, been through both of our budget workshops, and so this is just bringing back that budget as directed. The first public hearing and introduction of the 2024 budget, and we do have to conduct a separate record vote to ratify the property tax revenue increases. These are just the slides that we didn't bring at the general fund workshop, so we just wanted to bring them back so that you could see them quickly. The chart showing all funds and where the operating revenues are distributed throughout. And then, of course, expenses by type for all funds. And finally, the general fund, and this is the mayor, the slide, mayor, that I think that you requested to see at the workshop, so I just wanted to bring that back for you to see quickly and see that property taxes, 48% of our total revenue in the general fund. Other taxes make up 34%, charges for service at 11%, and then other at 7%. Expenses, public safety represents 57% of our general fund budget, followed by public works and other services at 12% each. Included in this budget are, is the peer council WIT grant, the police year three of the body camera contract, and of course, the raises that you approved at 3.5% across the board, with the exception that 3.5% that went to the police department could be allocated through the meet and confer contract if that comes to fruition. This budget ordinance concludes, includes all of the same authorizations. This is the only change that we're requesting with the authorization for city manager to accept donations that do not exceed $5,000. So again, first public hearing, introduction of the ordinance adopting the 2024 budget, and I need to conduct a separate vote with this specific language, please.
Okay. And so each council member will need to read this.
I think we just need one motion and a second on this reading, and then a separate vote to say yea or nay.
So we're going to have, ask for a motion and a second on this quote, language. Then we'll each take a, and have to say publicly, right, yea or nay.
Yes, ma'am.
And so that's what we're going to do. So what I need is a motion for approval of this budget ordinance ratifying the property tax revenue increase reflected in the budget and place the adoption of this tax on the agenda for the September 19th, 2023 regular meeting of the city council. Go back to that slide, please. I wasn't through reading it.
We have to do a vote on this first, but I'll let you finish.
Okay, of the city council as an action item, so unfortunately, go back to the other one.
Pardon me, sorry, mayor.
So the first public hearing and introduction of an ordinance adopting the 2023-24 budget. So I need a motion to adopt the 2324 budget.
So moved.
So moved by Tommy, seconded by Lucy. Now, any public comment on this item? All right, so I'm going to start with Tommy. You made the motion. Yea or nay?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Lucy?
Aye.
Mayor? Aye. So that passes seven to zero. Now we will conduct a separate vote to, I'm not going to repeat that again, as I already repeated it.
Number two.
For number two. So with that, is there a motion for that?
So moved.
So moved by Tom, seconded by Larry. Now, public comment on that item? Seeing none, we'll take a vote, starting with Tommy.
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Lucy?
Aye.
Brenda? Aye. Motion passes seven, zero. Let's take a break. Harry, are we good?
We're still good.
Oh, I keep rushing this thing. Sorry.
Item D is the tax levy, first hearing of the tax levy.
So I got a.
We'll go pretty quick.
Which item is it?
Item D, ma'am.
D. Okay, item D is introduction of an ordinance leveling, leveling, that's hard to say, property taxes for the city of San Angelo for the 2023 tax year. Public hearing and first reading of an ordinance fixing and leveling ad valorem taxes for the current tax year for use and support of the municipal government of the city of San Angelo, Texas for the 2324 budget year, providing for the assessment and collection thereof, providing when the tax shall become due, providing when the tax shall become delinquent, providing for exemptions, providing for severability, providing for publication on the city-operated website, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, so again, first public hearing and introduction of the levy for property taxes for the 2023 tax year. Proposed rate is at 0.70042 per $100 valuation, as we discussed in the workshop. Again, that is a 0.0338 decrease from the previous fiscal year. And I need this specific language in this motion, please.
Okay, so may I have a motion? Okay, I'll make the motion that I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.7042 per 100 valuation, which is effectively a 7.24% increase in the tax rate.
I'll second.
Seconded by Tom. Any public comment? All right, with that, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, do we need to each read that number? Because before, we've had to individually each say that number.
That's only on the budget where you have to have the separate vote.
So we don't need to do that today?
Correct.
So with that, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Zero. Any opposed? Seeing none opposed, motion passes seven, zero.
Always confusing, and I guarantee you, every council person and yourself will get phone calls next week. The tax rate actually went down by three-point-something cents per hundred.
Yes. Thank you, Harry, because it is always an issue. So Tina, if you want to come forward again and explain to the public that we are reducing the tax rate on their property, not increasing it, and please explain that.
Yes, while the valuations did increase across the city, that valuation forced the tax rate down because of the 3.5% that has been alloc, or that has been implemented by the state regulations. So while our, our tax rate is still decreasing, our valuations did increase, but that forces the tax rate down.
The tax rate is down from.
By 3.38 cents.
By 3.38 cents, down.
Yes, ma'am.
From last year.
Even though that said to the contrary.
But the reality is, the public will see a 3.38% decrease in the rate.
Correct.
Okay, to be clear, or not clear, or to be confusing. And we'll leave it at that, confusing.
Thank you.
Now, successfully, we're going to take a break. And we're going to ask Harry to have safe travels.
Thank you.
10:59 a.m., and we are ready to consider item E. Consider awarding task order number 11 under IDIQ contract ES-06-19. Engineering services for bank stabilization to freeze and nickels in an amount of 862,895 for stabilization, design, data collection, construction documents, drainage analysis, survey services, geotechnical investigation, and CLOMR, or C-L-O-M-R, package submittal utilizing 146,588 from the general capital projects fund balance, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. You're on, Al.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, Mr. Valenzuela. I'm Al Torres, construction manager for the city. And again, this is a proposal to hire Freeze and Nichols to do engineering work for the bank stabilization project. As you're aware, we, this is something we've been looking at for years. Over this past year, we've been working with Freeze and Nichols, trying to get a plan in place. This is the overall plan that we're looking at, and basically, we're looking at the one side of the river from Johnson Dam here, right past Oak Street, all the way to Bell Street Crossing down here. We're planning to do that in, in three sections. The first section is from Johnson Dam to the Oak Street Bridge here, and I'll explain that, reason for that in a minute. Section two is this section here, all the way to the, just past the nursing home where Rio Country Drive Bridge is. That is where the majority of the major issues are. And then the last. That is where the majority of the major issues are, and then the last phase will be down to Bell Street, which, which is not quite as bad as the other sections. So, basically, again, like I said, we're gonna, we want to continue stabilization. This is a project that we did years ago up towards Central High School, so we're gonna continue that stabilization all the way to Bell Street, protect from erosion, loss of trees, trails, landscaping, trees in particular, we've lost a lot of trees into the river, and we want to keep that from happening further, and then create safer walking paths continuously down the river. The proposal we have with Fries and Nichols, their proposal includes these items, design management, preliminary design, final design, construction documents, an engineer record to help oversee the project, surveying, they did a lot of surveying already, but there's some minimal surveying they had to add, environmental issues, and the CLOMR, which is required by the Corps of Engineers. And then, we are proposing a pedestrian bridge just past Oak Street, so they'll include that as part of their design in there. So, the engineering contract that they have proposed is for 862,895. The funds will come, 716,308 will come from an existing account that we have specifically for this, and then 146,588 is coming from the general capital projects fund. So, we had a previous contract with Fries and Nichols, some of you might wonder, didn't we already have them do some, some work? That previous contract was 93,277, and they did, basically, before they could do design, they had to do data collection, surveying, and they did an analysis, they gave us a pretty extensive analysis of, this is how we rate each section of the bank, you know, high, low, moderate, critical, and then they proposed some pre-design ideas, but the actual design itself is what this new contract would be. So, just some quick pictures, you can see where a lot of places, the erosion's getting close to the walking trails, in some places, I mean, this, this sidewalk is gone here, so it's, we're gonna have to, you know, you can see right there, the erosion's completely under, under the sidewalk. We have hit some spots already, as they've become critical. Shane and his group have done some critical spots down by the convention center. Basically, they can do little fixes, but they can't do anything very large, because then LCRA and the Corps, you know, they get involved, we have to do the CLOMR. These, this two pictures, that one and this one, are down by Central High School, these are, we did a couple of years ago, these, even these were big enough that we had to have them engineered to have CLOMR done, so, but this is kind of the, you know, what we're looking, partly what we're looking at, Fries and Nichols, and some of the nicer areas, we'll probably do some different approaches, but for the most part, it's gonna be this kind of approach. I do want to mention that a few council meetings ago, we did come to you to let you know that we've applied for a forestry grant. If you have questions about this, Carl can probably speak more to it, but basically, the, the grant is for recovery, restoration, and conservation of the urban tree canopy along the banks of the Contra River. So, our argument in that grant is that this erosion is causing trees to fail, so we're gonna, you know, trying to stop that, and this grant will allow us to do irrigation and plant more trees, and help pay for this stabilization. So, the grant request that we made was for 4,568,327. We would match 4,668,327 for total project cost of 9,236,654. Now, I don't know when, Carl probably answers, but I don't know when we're gonna get an answer on this, I think sometime fairly soon.
It's supposed to be in the next month or two.
Yeah, so, this will help us as we move forward down the road, once we get the design done, when it comes time to actually look at, how do we implement the design? But however, we do need to get the design done, because we have to have it in place, number one, to be able to apply for this grant or any other grants that we get, but also, when we're ready, we want to be able to say we have a plan in place. We talked about phases, now, I talked about phase one being Johnson Dam to Oak Street Bridge, we have an existing grant already in place for that section, and that's one of the reasons this is so important, that we get this design started, because that clock is already ticking. Fries and Nichols has agreed to do that design first, before we do anything else, so that we can get that project going, get the CLOMR in place, and get a contractor going on that first section, so we can at least see some progress on that. Phases two and three, of course, you know, when we get to those points, we have to talk some more about funding, but right now, we're just talking about design. And of course, we recommend approval of this engineering contract, I think it's very critical that we approve it, so that we can get started on, on design for the, for the overall length, but especially for this first phase.
I've been talking about bank stabilization for a couple of years, so to see the, the level of the problem with these photographs is very disturbing to me, because it's obviously, we're way behind the eight ball on getting this done, and we can't lose sidewalks, it gets more expensive, we can't lose trees, that's a joke. We gotta get all over this, I mean, we're way behind the eight ball in bringing this forward and attacking it, so, questions, comments from council?
Leave to approve.
Leave to approve, second. Public comment? It's unusual, let me just say, isn't it unusual that it would be a fifty-fifty, fifty-fifty grant where we have to match it fifty percent?
Is that unusual? No.
Because I thought generally, we had a twenty percent, twenty-five percent.
varies from any, they range from all over the place. If we're lucky enough, they are the twenty, or, but it's not unusual for the fifty-fifty, sometimes sixty, forty, it just, they're all over the place usually, just depends.
Any public comment concerning this item? Seeing none, we'll take a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six, zero. Item F, consider approving a, quote, "not to exceed" proposal for the 29th Street Youth Sports Practice Area from basic IDIQ in an amount not to exceed 1,505 for construction services, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Al, you're on again.
Thank you, again. So, this, most of you are familiar with this, I've presented before, council on this before, this is the 29th Street Softball Complex, it's been there for many years, it's in a big state of disrepair, is located right across the river from Kirby Park, here's Kirby Park down here. So, well, just, just an overall, again, I love you, you've seen this, but just to give you a rundown of what we're, we're looking at, we're gonna demolish the existing band shell, upgrade the existing baseball field, which is the main field here, including irrigation materials, fencing, et cetera, new bleachers, the existing practice fields will remain as they are, a new prefabricated pedestrian bridge down here at the bottom, a new six-foot walking trail, regrading these fields down here along the river, and using them as practice fields, a wildflower area. We have an existing parking lot that we're gonna make ADA accessible, there's a BMX course that we're, we're not, we're not doing it, but we're allowing the space for a local group to come in and do that.
That's not been approved by.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, so let's not put it out there, as it's gonna happen, because we don't know that there's approval for that.
And then, a, a new toilet and septic system. So, we said we have a quote of 1.9 million dollars not to exceed. We're doing this as a job order contracting process, which is, if you're familiar with buy board process, basically, contractors are on this list that are pre-approved, and we're negotiating a contract with them. They are value engineering as we speak, I was, basically, as of right now, they've already talking about lowering that 150,000 at least, probably a little bit more, based on just value engineering, some of the items stuck into subcontractors getting lower prices, but I'm still working on them, on, on maybe looking at different vendors for different things, and maybe lowering it even more. However, we're still above that 1.5 million, million dollars.
Here's a concern I have, what I just read says an amount not to exceed 1,505. You have on here not to exceed 1,905, so we're 400,000 off from this slide versus what the language on our agenda says.
This slide should not be stated that way, so, it's still the not to exceed 1.5.
Yes, ma'am, the contractor's proposal is, is 1.9, but since we cannot accept a 1.9 dollar amount, because all we have is 1.5, all you could approve today is a not to exceed of 1.5.
What we'll be asking you to do is approve a not to exceed 1.508546, with authorization for staff to value engineer the agreement to get it back into that budget with a representative from council, in this case, it should be Tom representing that.
Correct, and I know that's a little confusing, and that, and that didn't help, but that's, that's basically what it is, is 1.5 is what we have, so I am negotiating with the contractor to try to get that down, and then, you mentioned the BMX trail, as everybody knows, this is not our land, this is Corps of Engineer land, so they have the final say-so on what's approved and not approved here. Carl is working with them, they, they originally approved this idea when we started, including the BMX, but the pedestrian bridge wasn't in the proposal then. We have, Carl's resent them the proposal a while back, including the bridge, and he just heard recently that they're hesitant about approving the pedestrian bridge, they're concerned about liability on it. They're also hesitant on approving the BMX course. The BMX course is no big deal, because again, we, we're not really doing anything there, we were just gonna allow somebody else to come in and develop that, but the bridge could be an issue, so, I'm gonna say right now, the bridge and the restroom are both roughly 300,000. I know that from, from conversations with him. So, if the bridge were to not be approved, that gets below the 1.5 just by itself. However, we think the bridge is a very key part of this, and we're gonna do everything we can to get that, keep that bridge in there. So, if we have to, if we can't get the value engineering down anywhere else, another option is to delete the restroom. There are restrooms already at Kirby Park, but it's a long ways from this baseball field over to Kirby Park, so, if we have to, that's, that's another area we can do that, but.
Question mark on the liability issue, it's their land, but I'm assuming we have a contract with them to use that land.
Correct.
And I would assume the contract could read, the city would own the liability attached to that bridge, that it would not be the Corps of Engineers' responsibility, and if we could correct that language to be reflective of that, because that bridge is very important. It connects Kirby Park to this.
And I don't know if Teresa or Carl could speak further to that, but I, that sounds like something we could probably do.
Yeah, we can contract any of that liability away, I'm a little bit confused on what liability they believe they have for a pedestrian bridge in the first place, and sometimes people throw that out as the reason when there's really, they just don't want to do it, and there's not another reason, so I'm not sure what their actual concerns about liability are, but we could always try to negotiate language so that we assume some of that.
Let's work on that, because that bridge is hugely important, and either we need to relook at that contract to be inclusive, or understand what they consider liability, since we have a lot of pedestrian bridges, not necessarily on the Corps of Engineer property, but we have a lot of them, so it's not like we're not used to issues. So, that, to me, is really important, and agreed that the restroom's quite a distance away, if we don't have, I mean, so, we need, we need both of those things to happen, so.
Yes, ma'am, and it could be, there's, there's other things we're looking at, that fence, we're replacing all the fencing, but it's really not in terrible shape, so, you know, that's another item where if we leave the existing fencing, I don't know if that'll get us down below that number or not, but we're looking at different things, and also, looking at diff, maybe a different company to do the bathrooms, or a different company to do the bridge even, maybe get a lower price on some of those, so he, he's, he's looking around, and we're, we're trying to do some value engineering. But I'm, I'm just telling you, those are two, you know, and, and they're a catch 22, because if the bridge is gone, we almost have to have the bathroom, because you can't get over to Kirby Park.
Correct.
But if the bridge is there, then the bathroom could technically go away, but it is a long ways over there, so.
This project's been sort of out there for quite a while, we really need to get this project moving forward. Tom, it's your district, and I know you have thoughts about it.
Yeah, I just want to see the momentum, stay behind it, move it forward. We've talked about it, we're to that point, you know, there's a picture of what we'd like to have the bridge, but.
Looks great.
I mean, the number one thing you get calls about is like, in the spring, soccer teams, baseball teams, everybody, and you don't realize what's over there because of basically the obstructions down the river, and I think if you cleaned it up and put those two together, it would look really, really nice, and so, it's something I'd like to see move forward. You know, I'll make a motion to approve with, Rick, you had some nomenclature statements that need to be in there, allow y'all to value. And Teresa may be able to state it better, but basically, that we be able to value engineer the project, to bring it into the allocated budget amount.
Do the microphone, please.
I don't know if it's on, does that help?
Rick's microphone's not on.
Any rate, so, basically, bring that into budget with value engineering, and authorizing Tom to be the representative from council to help us make those decisions. I would make that motion, that would be what Rick just stated, allow y'all to value engineer that, I would be primary, I would at least say, I should not be the only person on council that should be allowed input, I have a second, in case I have a heart attack or fall off agility course.
Well, I think it's either Lucy or Harry.
Yeah, Lucy, let's make Lucy, pro team.
Because I think those two, you know, need to be together on that.
I, I do want to bring another item up for your consideration, is maintenance costs, and again, Roger and Carl can speak some more to this, but they have a, they've estimated a one-time non-recurring cost of 93,000, and then personnel and operating costs of 116,000 annually, so.
Well, here's what I would say about that, number one, it's not even done yet.
Right.
So, talking about maintenance costs today, when we don't even have approval to move forward on it, is way behind, the egg before the.
Art before the horse.
Or the horse, or.
I think Lucy could do that, Lucy could volunteer 116. But staff has been hammered in the past for not warning council what the maintenance costs are gonna be, so you don't have to take any action on this today, we're not asking for that, but we are simply telling you, this is an upcoming budget, you will see these numbers come back.
And when it impacts the budget, bring it forward, we're fore, we're warned, we get it, let's get the park done.
And this is our expected timeline, assuming, you know, things get.
So, in 2024, so we gotta waze here before you even start.
Mm-hmm.
Is this correct?
Yes.
Is that, no, construction starts in October.
That's, we'll get it done within six months, six, eight months.
So, we'd be ready for next summer. Fantastic.
Yeah.
Yes, Larry, please.
I think we all agree that the bridge and the restrooms are critical. Have you considered cutting anything else out from this project? Those two items, to me, are extremely important.
Yes, sir, like I said, we, we're looking at, and some little things right off the bat, like, like, we are redoing a little bit of the fence for the BMX was gonna go, but if that's not gonna happen, that fencing doesn't have to happen. If we don't replace the existing fence around the ball field, like I said, it's not in terrible shape, it'd be nice to replace it, but that's, that's a dollar amount. We're also talking about, if we have to, reducing the amount of walking trails. We go all the way around, but there's areas where we probably don't have to have walking trails. Concrete is very expensive, as you know, so that, that would go a long way, so we're looking at different things that we can scale down on.
The contractor has also assessed some of the existing bids to see if he can get better ones, so basically, on the concrete, he's looked at a way to reduce that cost by potentially up to 100,000, so there's some other things he's looking at, ways to save, and those are where we just need the ability to negotiate with him and work on those. Well, I'll stick with my initial motion, and then I'll just say, you know, also throw out the ability for y'all to look and research for funding, for future funding for this also.
I'll second that.
Now, may I, may I, and there's a second on that, may I offer this comment, just an idea, when we get a final number, I believe that this facility was a part of the original ballot items when we approved the half-cent sales tax, and so, my suggestion would be worst-case scenario, if we have to go to Cozy DC to get some balancing of funds to complete this project, because it's four, five years, 10 years since the ballot was approved, but this park was approved, and I think that at some point, should we have to, to make this park have all the things that we believe are important to it, that we ask for that consideration.
I think my last statement there said, or reach out and find other types of funding, may cover exactly what you just said.
Okay.
That's not my idea, all right, I got it, there's smarter people here than me, trust me. I'll take credit for it.
With that, okay, so there is a, a motion, there is a second, it's open for public comment, if there is anyone left in the audience. I can't see, because that screen's right in front of me.
We're good.
We're good, so let's take a vote, all those in favor of the motion, as made by Tom Thompson, please say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, that passes six, zero.
I would love to see how you document that motion.
We might have restated.
He's gonna be watching the video.
She'll figure it out.
But then, Rick wasn't speaking into the microphone, because the microphone's not on, so she might have trouble recapturing that, but she made notes.
She knows where I work, she can.
Okay.
If you're ever there.
Okay, so, Item G, consider approving SourceWell contract number 031121-HSQ for the purchase of autonomous mowing equipment from. the purchase of autonomous mowing equipment from, how do you say that?
Husqvarna.
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 Professional Products Incorporated in the amount of 63,139.86, utilizing the Texas Bank Sports Complex fund balance, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Ryan, you're on.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Yes, just to be somewhat brief, as Mayor, you read, we are requesting approval for this purchase. This would be for four units, and if you're wondering, what is an autonomous or a robotic mower, pardon me, here's a picture of the unit. So to, again, just to be concise, two of the larger units and two of the smaller units is what is before you to approve for purchase. These units be used at the Texas Bank Sports Complex. It's before you this morning because of our request for funding for the purchase out of fund balance, which you've seen me request in the past.
Does that leave the fund balance in the position that we like the fund balance to be?
Did not answer that question, ma'am.
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
Carl, do you, are there...
Tina's coming forward, because we don't want to approve using fund balance and leaving us in a negative position on fund balance.
Yes, ma'am, we've reviewed the fund balance, and it's sufficient to cover this cost.
But then leaves you with the right amount in the fund balance.
Yes, with the reserves that we need to operate on it, yes.
Thank you.
One great thing about these, I know y'all know that, but as we struggle with getting staff, this is kind of a creative way that staff is looking to really combat that, so thank you all.
Well, I would say the fund, there's probably several people sitting at this table today who'd like to know, do they make a residential size? And if so, what's the pricing on that?
Y'all can come over and watch it, see if you like it.
Yeah.
It made up your flower gardens a little bit, though.
I thought you were going to look for an autonomous counsel. That's probably what you were going with it.
Sorry to disappoint.
AI can do anything.
So, Ryan, this is going to save you some money, is it not, with people, and as functionality, it requires less people, less time? In the end, it should probably be more efficient.
So I would think the efficiencies would increase greatly, because there's no tending to these units, they're just going to go do what you program them to do. And so that'll alleviate staff to go do other things that are really pressing on their schedule.
It sounds too good to be true, and what I just want to say is the fine. I want to make sure we watch this from day one, because we bought other product before, other machines like the Benedetti, that was going to be this unbelievably wonderful piece of equipment, who was going to do all these miraculous things, only to find out it failed. So I want to know that from early on, we buy these, that we are watching them closely to make sure they perform at the level that we've been told they perform, and if they don't, we address it ASAP, so we don't get down the road and say, they didn't work.
We've also had those out trialing, how long did y'all have it out there running? So it's not, we have actually run it on the field, seen it run, you may want to speak to that.
Right, and we review the specs, and just as you mentioned, it's what we're told. And so the intention, as I understand it, between both my perspective and the department's perspective, is we want to see them operate, we want to see what we gain, where we benefit, and if, if all is well, we hope to be back to you to purchase more of them for other projects for the same location. So it is going to be on our radar, we are going to watch that carefully.
Roger, I think wants to add comment.
Good morning, Council, Mayor. Roger Hovlock, Park Senior Manager. Through the calculations that I've made, my anticipate, or I anticipate about 10 hours per week man-hour savings that I'll be able to have to do other things at the complex, which if you stretch that over the growing season, could be as much as 400 to 500 man-hours just with these four units. And so if we see that type of improvement and enhancement within the productivity out there, we may be coming back next growing season, looking at maybe purchasing more. But we want to give this a good try, I can see good things with this, it's state-of-the-art, so...
Thank you.
Ma'am?
Yes, Larry.
What about security?
The units do have some built-in functionality for security, since they are operated through GPS-based positioning, that GPS system also tells us where it is, specifically if it moves out of a designated area. So could someone pick it up and haul it away? Absolutely, but it'd be quite difficult to run away from it.
Nights, those things only run basically during the workday, do you want to...
That's right. They do park, so they'll park on their charging stations, and Roger, I believe, has facilities that they'll be closed into.
It's one of the reasons why we chose the Texas Bank Sports Complex for these specific mowers. I cannot, at this point, see these being used in our park systems throughout the city. We do not have fenced areas, we do not have personnel there all the time. At the sports complex, we do. So we'll have eyes on this, we're going to be programming them, we'll be watching them, maintaining them, we have to change out the blades, things like that. And so I feel a lot safer with their use at the sports complex. If we see that it could be used possibly in our park systems, we may move to go that direction in the future. At this point, I do not.
Many Aruba has been lost within a house.
Well, I was going to ask that question, is this autonomously...
Many Arubas gone missing and sold out.
Hopefully, we won't make it... ...all over, or does it have a programmed track?
Move your kid to college and find one under your bed.
A little bit of both. So the, the programming is within the area you designate. So within the sports complex, they'll be designating areas in the fields and outside of the fields that are specific for that unit to run, and it will follow the program that's set. So they could carry it somewhere else and program a new path, but the intention currently is to use it there at the sports complex.
And how many hours a week maintenance will there be on these units?
The blade life, I don't know if Roger, you remember the blade life, but it's, it's pretty good, because they're not mowing pastures. It is really a maintenance tool, so we're mowing very small bits of grass, but the blades are very quick to change out, there's really not anything else to do, they charge themselves.
Oh yeah, there is something else to do, and that's empty the machine, right?
No, sir, they mulch, and so there's nothing to, nothing to empty.
Yeah, there's no bags.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Maybe we won't make a TV commercial with it running through the flower bed.
That's the thing, is we don't want to program it wrong.
I can, I can just see, City of San Angelo.
Whose district is Angelo?
Don't put it out there.
I'd make, I'd make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second that.
There's a motion, there's a second, is there public comment? Seeing none, hearing none, let's take a vote. Those in favor of approving these new robots?
Roombas.
Great Roomba.
Let's tell me, yea or nay.
Aye.
Aye.
It passes 6-0. I believe the last thing on this agenda is item H, which is consider request for an appeal of the Planning Commission's denial of CU 23-28 for a short-term rental located at 2310 West Tuig. John, you're on.
Thank you. John James, Director of Planning and Development Services. This was a request for a short-term rental on Tuig that was denied by the Planning Commission, and so it comes to you on appeal. This is, we've started doing these maps for these short-term rental requests, just to show the neighborhood and other short-term rentals in the area. So the current request is located there in the purple, so we also show the other approved ones are all the green ones, so there are four in the area. Those are the ones that have been approved and have opened with a certificate of occupancy. The three blue ones that you see, those have all been approved by the Planning Commission, but have not yet opened. They're still working through the building permit process or the fire marshal's inspections, and so, again, they've gotten approved by the Planning Commission, but not yet operational.
Are they within that 500 feet? Because there's the 500-foot rule, is that right?
That's correct, none of these are within 500 feet of the requested. And then there have been two that have, within the Santa Rita area, that have either been denied or withdrawn, that have, that originally came forward. So we did send 23 notices to the surrounding property owners. You can see that we've received five in favor and one in opposition from the neighbors. I will note here that, let me go back, this was an operational, short-term rental, they got the approval, began operating. I think there was some confusion on the renewal date, and maybe the applicant can speak to that, but he failed to renew it by the, before it expired, and so it technically expired, which prompted him to have to start the process over and come back for a new conditional use rather than a renewal of the previous one. But I just point that out to say that this has been operating on a renewal, which we also did in this case, even though it's technically not a renewal. We check with code enforcement, the police department, we check our own records and planning to see if there have been any complaints, and in this case, there have not. And so this does come to you with a staff recommendation, because it has been operational, most of the neighbors are in favor, and there have been no complaints on it.
Why is it a conditional use, not just a renewal?
Well, again, he, as our current ordinance reads, once you get the approval, you have to get a renewal after one year. If you get that renewal, then you can renew every two years. And part of that is by design of the ordinance that, excuse me, one of the concerns we get is, well, we're not sure if it's going to cause problems, and so the renewal process allows us to approve one, and then if it causes problems, the neighbors complain, we get code enforcement or police complaints, then the Planning Commission or you all have the ability to not renew it. So it's an incentive for the short-term rental operator to follow the rules, not do things that make their neighbors unhappy, because it requires this renewal process. In this case, it just expired before he came in for, for the renewal, and so we have to treat it as if it's a new application. These are just our standard requirements for the conditions, have to maintain parking, receive the certificate of occupancy, they also have to do an annual fire inspection with the fire department. And so this did go to the Planning Commission at their June meeting, they did deny the request, and the applicant has appealed that denial to you all. I will note here that it does not require a supermajority like a zoning, if Planning Commission denies it, it requires you all to approve with a supermajority. This does not have that same requirement.
Why did the Planning Commission deny it?
Well, there was very little conversation, this was the June meeting, where they had 15 requests for short-term rentals. We had just sent out the letter saying, you appear to be operating a short-term rental, but you're not paying hotel taxes and you don't have a conditional use. That letter went out to, I can't remember, 40 or 50 short-term rentals that were operating. So that first month, we got 15 applications. And so honestly, they were kind of cranking through these, and it was late in the meeting, and there was very little discussion on this one. I believe the only comment made was, there was one opposition, as you saw, and the applicant was not able to make it to that meeting. And so the person who made the motion to deny it based it largely on the fact that he wasn't there to, to answer questions or justify it.
Karen, I'm going to ask you to comment on it.
Just to expand on John's most recent comment, I have been told and have heard in the Planning Commission meetings fairly regularly, that in the conversations about STRs in our community in general, that there is a profound desire that the owner-operator be responsive to the neighbors and the neighborhood. And I don't want to speak for the Planning Commission, but absence for a renewal or a request would be a concern of mine, that perhaps the applicant-operator might not be responsive to the neighbors. So the five in favor refuse that, but it's just something to mention, and perhaps we just need to do, maybe we don't need to do it, but something needs to be done about people remembering dates, we can't remember dates for people. But that would be all I would offer. And I would also ask that if the, if the owner-operator was forced to start the process over again, I'm not sure why we're hearing this, it would probably go forward, it looks favorable, the owner-operator's probably paying their taxes as they're required, so it's a kind of a puzzle.
Well, at this point, even renewals go to the Planning Commission. We've discussed with them a possible change to the ordinance, where they see the original application, but then the renewals could be approved by staff if there are no complaints and et cetera, and they're paying their hotel taxes, and we would check all of that and then issue them a renewal if they meet all those criteria without it going back to the commission. But again, there, there was some debate about that at the commission, we haven't come back to them with that ordinance change yet. So as of now, all renewals, as well as initial applications, have to go back to the Planning Commission.
So if the process has begun again, then that probably means more fees and documentation required from the owner of the property, that that process starts over truly financially and in terms of legal requirements needing to be met?
It does, I believe the application is the same either way, so I don't think at this point, although that's, that's something we should probably look at, but at this point, a renewal is not a different fee than the original application.
What is the bottom-line benefit to the property owner-operator by our vote if the process is already underway?
I'm sorry?
You indicated that the person was required to start the process and has done so?
Yeah, well, the, the main issue is, if they are still operating, they're operating illegally from the time it expired until they get this, this approval. That's their advantage to renewing, is that they keep in constant, you know, they're authorized to do the STR.
So our vote rescues them from a, what am I trying to say? From, from being forced to pause operation?
That's right.
Okay, thank you. I didn't say...
Further questions, Tom?
John, no wait, go ahead, Larry.
You go ahead.
So how long has it been running?
I think the applicant would, would have to answer that. I believe it was his first, it was his first approval, and so it operated for a year, and then he just missed the deadline a few months ago.
So operated for a year, zero complaints.
Correct.
He's missed the deadline.
Correct.
And we're just going through those. I would hate to be a property owner, having a, something that generates my income, and because of one lapse or I missed a date, as important as it is to back up Karen's ideas, you need to manage your property, and there are people that are. I mean, every time somebody moves in and moves out, you're in contact with the property management. They should have done that, but if there hadn't been any holes in it and no complaints fired into it, it's a sensitive neighborhood. Just throwing my opinion in there, Karen, I would hate for somebody to lose their income and then turn around and have to sell the property because they don't have a way to generate for it.
I completely agree, I just want to be careful that we don't set a precedent of forgiveness because people forgot.
I'd agree.
That's...
Yeah.
I would venture to say that we're really not forgiving them for anything, because they have to start all over again, and they have to pay their fees and the paperwork and everything, so if anybody loses by forgetting, it's the applicant themselves, so I would...
You could, you could get one of these days where everybody's madder than hell at the Planning Commission, and they just want to get through it.
And you lose it.
And you lose the thing, and so...
And that's kind of what happened, it seems, and that's not fair either.
I think that gets a little...
It's reality, but it's not fair. I think if, if there had been complaints and issues, that would be one thing, which there haven't been, there are five neighbors in favor, so it means that they don't feel like there's, it's been a problem. We've all missed appointments or dates, or putting it on the wrong calendar date, or getting to medical doctors, I mean, we've all done that. That's not excusable, but it is excusable, because we're all human beings. And if there were problems here, I think that would be a different issue.
Ma'am, I do want to point out that this applicant, applicant did it right away the first time.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the great majority of the 15 people that applied is because they were running operations that they shouldn't have been running. This applicant was running one that, that he did it the right away.
Did a good job.
Yeah, just missed it.
No, I'm, I'm not opposed, I just don't want us to have to manage cases like this on a regular basis.
Yeah, it's one of the reasons why, you know, I always say, we must utilize our city council meetings to have open discussions about issues. We are responsible to the citizens, and our job is not to just always say what the, what the public wants us to say or would like to hear, our job is really to ask questions and understand the situation and try to resolve issues, even when sometimes we say comments or make comments that, that are hard to say. But we got to open up the dialogue, we got to open up the conversation and make sure we've expressed the issues attached to the item.
Shall I make a motion to approve the appeal?
If you would.
I have a comment.
But Larry would like, but we've now had a motion, a second, you can still make a public comment.
Just a clarification, I was under the impression that the... Just a clarification, I was under the impression that the property owner was paying his hotel occupancy taxes during this period. Is that true or no?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. To me, that shows good faith on the part of the property owner.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Okay, public comment. Please come forward. You've got a few minutes before it turns.
Yes, ma'am, I'll, I'll be brief. My name is Alazar Cano, I'm the owner of the property. I live in Alpine. Got up this morning about four-thirty to be here, so I, I thank y'all for.
Probably cooler there than it is here, too.
It is, yes, ma'am. Yeah, it, we got some rain yesterday and a little bit, but it, it goes down to sixty, so that's nice. Come see us. Just real quickly, I wanted to reiterate a couple of things, and, and first of all, I guess ask for forgiveness of why I wasn't here the last time. See, what had happened was, I got an email, and it was dated, let me think, this one came through, staff recommendation approval, a request for short-term rental located in twenty-three-ten West Tuig. And, and this was just a memo, it wasn't the actual decision by the, by the commission. And then the date for the, the meeting was set thereafter, assumptions. I made an assumption, thinking, okay, they've approved it. I should have been here, and, and I'm, I, my apologies for not attending, but I was under the impression that once the Planning Commission, you know, approved unofficially the recommendation before the vote, I figured, okay, then it's a done deal. But again, that, that'll never happen again, and hopefully, if I see you all back here again, it'll be for much more important business, like one of these multimillion-dollar projects. I mean, this is, this little house is my second home. I come down every other weekend, first, first, third, and fifth weekend. I have two little ones here, one of them is at the Santa Rita School Elementary, have a little one, a four-year-old, she'll be five. I'm an old guy, but I got a five-year-old. But I, I enjoy coming to San Angelo, and hopefully, my, my long-term goal is eventually to move here. I want to be using that property as my point of contact. In the meantime, somebody mentioned making a little bit of money. At this point, I'm trying to break even, to be honest with y'all. I have a mortgage back home, I got, you know, a business back in Alpine, and, but my plan is, as I age out and kind of doing, going through semi-retirement, Alpine, I mean, San Angelo's going to be my, my home. So.
If you have two young kids, you might be postponing retirement for a while. They get very expensive.
Well, I, I said, come to San Angelo, but I'm going to work. So, yeah, I would, see, I retired, and, and that's the whole thing with, with these little guys, you know, there, I've got my older girls, but I have these two little ones. And my, my whole intent is to be here as much as possible. And, and by having that house, it allows me to come in, I block off my time when I'm here, I stay in my home, and it's also what my little guys consider their, their home in San Angelo, or Dad's home in San Angelo. So it's, it's personal. It's a personal, it's, it's business, and, you know, we all have to pay the bills. But at the end of the day, the, the name of the location on the site, on the, on the Airbnb website, is Casa Koa, K-O-A. Well, it just so happens that's my son's name, which is why, you know, the name where it originated. But I thank y'all this morning. I've been in your positions, I was a judge back home for a couple of terms, and it's a, I know it's a tough position to be in sometimes. This morning, when I was hearing the discussion, guess what? I didn't miss being in your position. So I, I was glad to come in, and I'm glad to go back home this afternoon. But again, thank you for your time. I appreciate the consideration for, for the approval, and, and hopefully, I'll see y'all at the, down, down the street at the Eater Eater, HEB. I, I go and spend money when I'm here, so I just, just so you know.
Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you. I know I have a motion, and I think I had a second, right? We've had some public comment. Let's take a vote. All of those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none opposed, motion passes six, zero. Now, I think I've covered every item. Is there anything I've missed, with the exception of no closed session? And then we are going to go ahead and do the follow-up administrative issues, which basically I think we must move to the consider approving various board nominations, the Civic Events Advisory Board, John Austin Stokes for SMD five to an unexpired term ending December twenty-twenty-four, and the tax increment reinvestment zone, Shirley Spears, SMD four to an unexpired term ending July twenty-twenty-four. May I have a motion for approval of those two items?
I'll move.